Well, good evening. Is this on? Yep, there we go. Well, good evening. Today is January 16th, 2024, and you have found yourself in the Rowan County Commissioner meeting. We hope that's where you intended to be. If not, you might be in the wrong place. Well, we're glad you're here, and we hope that you find your time with us this evening profitable. We begin our meetings the same way every two weeks when we have our meetings, and we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to have our chaplain come forward. Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward. Chaplain will provide for us what is called a solemnizing prayer. A solemnizing prayer is, I guess it's maybe a legal term, but it implies that it's for the commissioners. It's not for you. We've got decisions we have to make every day, and certainly we will tonight, so we seek wisdom. And the best place we know to get wisdom is through a praying chaplain. And so we're going to ask him to pray for wisdom for us tonight, and we're also going to have a pledge of allegiance. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for the prayers tonight, to come this meeting tonight, and we thank you for our county commissioners, Lord, and the work they do, Lord. We thank you for the preparation they've made for this meeting tonight, your Lord. Pray you give them the divine wisdom they need to make the right decisions, your Lord. We thank you for the work they do, thank you for the love they have for Rowan County, your Lord. We place them in your hands tonight, help them tonight in this meeting we have tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Chaplain Taylor, thank you as always. We appreciate you and appreciate you being here. Glad you made it safely. All right, commissioners, do we have any additions to the agenda that you know of or deletions? Any additions or deletions? All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
To move.
All right, all in favor say aye. Consent agenda is in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion in a second.
To move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, our next item is we have special recognition. This is always fun for us, and so commissioners, if you'll join me out front, and we'd like to invite everybody's favorite Channel 3 news guy, David Wisnig, if he would join us up here. Will y'all give David a round of applause? Okay. Well, like I said, there are a few times throughout the year that we get to honor folks, sometimes for what they do, sometimes for special events, and so this is a real honor for the Board of Commissioners tonight to stand with a guy who is, I feel like universally loved in this community, is meant so much to all of us. After a 30-year career with Channel 3 News, David Wisnig decided to retire, and so we wanted to honor him, not only tonight, but just to show him how we appreciate him and what we feel about him, and so we wanted to present this as a proclamation recognizing and honoring David Wisnig. So I'll offer this. Whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners wishes to celebrate outstanding community members and their accomplishments and considers David Wisnig to be a valued community member worthy of recognition, whereas Mr. Wisnig began his career at local AM radio station WSTP before DJing for Appalachian State University's campus station, WASU, and he performed freelance work with Charlotte News Station WBTV after graduation from college. Whereas Mr. Wisnig is retiring from WBTV at the end of 2023 after 30 years, where some of his biggest stories included the Pilatex North Carolina Research Campus developments, Salisbury Millwork Fire, the funeral of President Ronald Reagan, numerous NASCAR-related stories, coverage of Hurricane Katrina, and a story honoring a fallen local police deputy, along with being the only local station reporter in the southeast U.S. to travel to London to report on the funeral for Queen Elizabeth II, bringing reports to affiliate stations throughout the United States. Whereas outside of his professional role, Mr. Wisnig has engaged in this community through a variety of means, including serving on multiple boards and community organizations, speaking to many churches and civic groups throughout the state, and encouraging listeners to take care of their mental health and to reach out to professionals for support and help, as well as serving at First Baptist Church for over 40 years. Whereas Mr. Wisnig has been honored at the local and state levels for his professional achievements and has won a variety of awards from various stories and projects. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners recognizes the outstanding community service provided by David Wisnig throughout his career and urges all citizens to join in congratulating David on an outstanding career with Charlotte News Station WBTV. Your work is appreciated by the community and the Board of Commissioners, thanks you for your dedicated service and wishes you a joyful retirement, this the 16th day of January 2024. We'd like to give this to you, David. I'll make that in a form of a motion. We have a second. David, come on back here with us. Oh, you're okay.
I just want to also thank David. He was the reporter around here when I started, and you're always kind, and I guess you've seen when folks don't know what they're doing, and you could have probably done some things that would embarrass me, but thank you. I appreciate your professionalism, and you've been a great asset to our community.
I think what Mike was saying, the good, the bad, and the ugly, right? No, thank you so much. You have meant so much to this group and this community. It's been very impressive, so thank you.
David and I grew up in Meadowbrook, about a generation apart. His older brother, Chris, I hung around with for a long time, and David was too young to come out and do anything with us at that time, so it's nice to see that he finally grew up and did something. But we do appreciate your fairness. We appreciate your actually wanting to get the story correct when you talked with us, and we appreciate very much what you have done in your career.
David, I appreciate you being the face of Rowan County for such a long time, doing a great professional job telling people across the state what's going on in this county and you're going to be missed.
Well, I just, so I get to hang around this guy, not only in the news area. He would call me on occasion and say, hey, can I come to your office and set up and get a word from you on this or that? And I was frankly always terrified kind of be in front of the camera because you're under the spotlight, right? So you want to represent your community well, you want to represent the board well, you want to represent your family well, and so I always appreciate his professionalism. And in a time where, this is where sometimes I'd get an eye roll from him because I would tell him I wasn't really fond of the national news, which maybe some of y'all understand that, but I was very fond of our local news, and there's always a difference. But beyond that, I also get to see him serve in our local church. I go to church with David. I'm privileged to be there with him, and I see how folks look up to him. He teaches a Sunday School class. It's been a long-running thing, and the thing that I want to leave, my impression of David is not the years with WBTV, but the character and the caring that he has for this community, the love that he has for this community, the love that he has for his fellow man, the passion with which he has served, and I just want to say the character, and it's not just you representing this county, but it's bigger than that. You've represented Christ in a really great way, and people see that, and I want to commend you for that and tell you that we just really appreciate you and we love you, and you're going to be greatly missed, and thank you for all those years, David.
I know you guys have a lot of other business to get to, so just give me a second. I just want you to know I'm very humbled by this, and I really appreciate it to you, the commissioners. For 32 years, I did work at WBTV, but I didn't work for WBTV. I worked for you. If you're a resident of Rowan County, you're the person I was trying to please. You're the person I was trying to get information to that I thought might be important for you. I tried to go at this job as a public service job. That's what it was for me for 32 years, and I just want you to know that I appreciate you. I also appreciate the agencies in this county. I've been blessed over 32 years to work with a lot of them, from the Sheriff's Department to the Health Department, Board of Elections, Veterans Office, Animal Control, all of them. And I can tell you to a person, their primary objective was the best interest of the citizens of Rowan County, and I saw that firsthand, and I'm not letting you in on any secret. You probably knew that, but we're blessed to live in this county, and I've been blessed by God to be able to have this job for so long. So again, thank you, and thank you for letting me work for you for so long.
That was a good one. Man, for just a great guy, so thank you all. All right, the next item, public comment. We have, let's see. All right, we have one person signed up for public comment, Dataria Parish. Hi, welcome. Thank you for being here. Yeah, come forward here to the mic. We're glad you're here.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. And I would like to simply read this letter that I have prepared.
Sure.
Dear Rowan County Board of Commissioners, we, members of the Salisbury Branch of the American Association of University Women, and I would like for all of those members to stand, please, who are present, call to your attention Executive Order 93. Whereas North Carolina enacted a statewide law that went into effect on April 2nd, 2019, as Governor Roy Cooper passed his executive order that state agencies may not request pay information from applicants nor rely upon previously obtained historical salary information when determining an applicant's salary. ASIA American Association of University Women is committed to workplace and economic equity. We recognize certain systemic practices contribute to the very real, persistent, and harmful gender pay gap. Did you know white women working full-time in the United States are paid just 84 cents to every dollar earned by white men? Black women earn 71 cents, and Latinx women earn 53 cents, and the consequences of this gap affect women throughout their lives. The pay gap even follows women into retirement. As a result of lower lifetime earnings, they receive less in Social Security and pensions. In terms of overall retirement income, women have only 50% to 70% of what men do. The gender pay gap is the result of many factors and is strictly linked to the history of labor in America, including race and ethnicity, disability, access to education, and age. As a result, different groups of women experience very different gaps in pay. The gender pay is a complex issue that warrants inclusive solutions, and that's why AAUW is in support of the possibilities of Executive Order 93. We are happy about the things that it can create to fully implement throughout the state according to the governor's request. Permit us to share, AAUW North Carolina has recently conducted an audit of county job applications statewide to gain a clearer picture of the practice of requesting salary history data of job applications within our state. Moreover, in viewing sample job applications, we found Rowan County is noncompliant with the governor's order, as multiple applications request work experience details questionings the candidate's prior salary. We, the members of AAUW, know certain questions, especially previous salary disadvantage those who may have experienced low pay due to gender and/or ethnicity bias. More specifically, the gender wage gap hurts North Carolina's families, businesses, and economy, and North Carolina women simply deserve more. However, women in North Carolina currently earn 19% less than men on average. If current trends continue, working women in North Carolina will not see equal pay until 2060, and women of color will wait even longer. It's the simple truth, and statistics show, women in North Carolina and across the country continue to earn less than men. While median earnings of men in North Carolina are $45,000, the women in our state earn $36,400, putting women's pay in North Carolina 32nd in the nation. With women historically earning less on average than men, requiring job applicants to report salary history can perpetuate gender pay inequities. Research shows women get paid less than men in their very first jobs, even when controlling for occupations, college majors, hours worked, location, and demographics. Furthermore, women are less likely to negotiate their salaries, and when they do negotiate, women are more likely to receive negative feedback and less likely to be promoted. Relying on salary history, again, can perpetuate the pay gap based on wrong assumptions that prior salary was free and fair from biasness. Did you know many states across the country are increasingly enacting salary history bans, and a growing body of evidence demonstrates a correlation with subsequent higher pay rates for women? The executive order issued by Governor Roy Cooper is fair and just, as it prohibits state agencies under the governor's oversight from requesting salary history from job applicants and directs them to avoid relying previously obtained salary history to determine an applicant's income. Executive Order 93 also directs the North Carolina Office of State Human Resources to remove employment salary history fills from the state employment applications as soon as possible. Thus, we are standing to ask the county to comply with the precedent set by the state of North Carolina and remove salary history information from Rowan County job applications, and further revise human resources policies to stipulate a ban on the consideration of salary history in pay packages. Simply put, the same work deserves the same pay. Your prompt attention and action to this matter is greatly appreciated. We look forward on moving progressively to pay equity in America. Respectfully submitted, Dataria Parish, President, with the members of AAUW Salisbury. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, we'll move on to item number four, a legislative hearing for Z11-23, Dynamic Developers. Shane, make his way in the room. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so this is a legislative hearing for Z11-23. The property owner is Dynamic Developers of the Carolinas, and the applicant is Amanda Huttering, attorney for the owner. And it is at the corner of Old Beatty Ford Road, Old Concord Road, and Ketner Farm Road on part of Tax Parcel 13712. If you look at the screen here, you'll see the subject property outlined in blue. It's about 10 acres out of an overall tract of 30-plus. Currently in this background, you see the yellow color representing the RA District, and they are proposing CBI/CD rezoning. Just for those that might be able to see in the back, this is Old Beatty Ford Road here, Old Concord Road here, and Ketner Farm. Let's look at the 2022 aerial photo. The parcel I referenced, the 13712, does go off the screen here at the north, but all the yellow is part of that tax parcel. What we're rezoning here, or at least the applicant has petitioned the board for, would be to rezone this area in red. With that CBI/CD application, it is conditional district for this site plan and the list of allowed uses that's before you will look at here momentarily, but the corner here at Ketner Farm Road would be a just under 13,000 square foot for the overall boxes depicted here. You see a parking lot, one access point. They do have a right turn lane that would be required by DOT. Doesn't have a driveway permit yet, but the indication from the local Salisbury office, it would require that right turn. Access would not be granted by the department directly on Old Beatty Ford or Old Concord Road for a retail store. There's some other uses we'll look at here also that would be allowed. This is the depicted septic area. The reason this tract is so large is because it's in a watershed to balance. It requires 12% limit on impervious coverage, so rooftop, pavement, gravel, or certain types of gravel, I should say, would be considered built upon, so they're not asking for the watershed intensity allocation. However, on the second track, this one here, you can see easily exceeds 12%. It's earmarked for a public administration use, namely a fire department and possibly EMS in the future, but this also would require a subsequent action of the board for a watershed allocation. Zooming in a little bit closer, you see the detail, still a little bit fuzzy, but on your version, of course, you can zoom in, it says future public administration use, and we'll talk more about some of the other details shortly. So Lot 1 was the one to the left-hand side accessing Ketner Farm Road. It would be permissible A through M, this allowed use list. It's not just general CBI, it would be conditional district that would have these opportunities. You see, some of them might not be as, I guess, evident of a market for it, but definitely the retail trade. It would allow any retail trade in CBI. Also, the finance, insurance, real estate, your office type uses, the health sector with these exceptions, childcare center, et cetera. Lot 2 would be the public administration use, and again, I've mentioned here Lot 2, subsequent SNA would be required. Doesn't look the clearest, but what I've tried to do in this, the current RA District is the base zone currently. What would be permitted in that district, a CBI in the middle, and then the conditional district. This is the arrangement. Anything that you see beyond the P, the special requirements means a small home occupation. Anything that you see here in the SR grouping is going to be limited to if the owner lived on the property and met a series of other ordinance standards. Continuing through the health service sector and public administration. Go back to the vicinity map here and talk about the other uses in the area and kind of what's going on. So further down Ketner Farm Road, one, this is a dead-end road. I think it serves six houses. There's plans for, although we haven't received a submittal for dividing that property, but there are future plans that they want to, the owner wants to put, I think, 18, 20 houses possibly. There's some on the corner currently. All that's zoned RA, and I've fielded several calls. You don't have to rezone to put a housing development in. So any of these conversations, subsequent, whatever the board decides, any single-family development doesn't require rezoning or any board action. You see the one lone CBI adjoining land use is the Fox's Store, and up here on the left-hand, upper-left is the Kannapolis area that was annexed for the Kannapolis Crossing Project. And for reference, that's about a mile and an eighth up there, and of course, across here, all this, again, RA, and the only other commercial that you see are further down to the interstate, one little repair shop that predated it. Look around the vicinity here. From Ketner Farm looking back west, see a joining neighborhood here. On this side, the Dynamic Developers have obtained permits and have houses under construction for three roadfront lots, and it continues up this way on Ketner Farm. I believe this one might be finished now, and two other lots that will be part of another application for the temporary use we'll hear about next. With Old Beatty Ford at your back, looking down Ketner Farm, road's about 18 feet wide, I would estimate. You see the striping here stops, and it turns into what I call loosely the tar and gravel. I think that's a slang term, but that's the type surface it is. It's a dead-end road. You see the no outlet sign here. And from that vantage point, looking back to Old Concord Road, Fox's Store, this is the area proposed for rezoning here and here. Down Ketner Farm, looking back across to Ebenezer Church and Old Concord, this is the rezoning area. And at the intersection, Old Beatty Ford, Old Concord, looking back west, rezoning area here. And this is looking north on Old Concord. The property slopes down to a drainage area here, further down Old Concord, and that Lot 2 would have access, it would be full access if it's a public administration use, which again is what they're requesting. So no limitation, no improvements would be required by DOT for full access, which means left and right unprotected turn movements would be allowed. And here's an image of Fox's Store. Completing the quadrant there, you have view south, there's a little residence here, the Crow residence at 4319 across from the church. Okay, a few things changed since the planning board meeting, one of which we have new traffic counts. Say they're new, but there are from '22. We have, well, let me start with Ketner Farm. There is a verbal for that approval, and of course, a subsequent driveway permit would be required for Ketner Farm. No other improvements required on that road, other than there was some talk in the application here about no outlets, reference for folks leaving the store on Lot 1. application here about no outlets, reference for folks leaving the store on Lot One, and some signage details there that's in their application. So on Old Beatty Ford Road, forty-seven to forty-three hundred count, the well-under capacity of fourteen-six, was a safety project that was completed a while back for a small amount of widening to the road, and I mentioned here the restrictions on those right turns. For Old Concord, the number actually went down slightly, but the seventy-four hundred is the largest amount of volume on the road, well-under capacity here. I'd say this sa- safety project reference is definitely nominal. They widened the striping on the edge of the road from four inches to six inches, but again, it wasn't a project that DOT completed recently, and Old Concord is identified as a future four-lane road. It's unfunded, don't know when that or if that would ever happen, but it maintains a hundred-and-ten-foot observed roadway for any development. For trip generation, the IT manual is sort of the the gold standard when you do a plug-in variable of a development, how much traffic would be generated, the number of trips. The manual does not have anything for a fire station or a public administration use, but we do have, being that it's narrowed down, we picked a few uses that are possible in the allowance and how many trips that could generate, and the most was thirteen-hundred if it was a gas station. But again, we're speculating at this point. You saw the previous numbers, we're under capacity from that perspective, so don't see any issue on the capacity side. Folks will remember the improvement project that there was a number of accidents there at the intersection. And prior to, get my back straight here, so in two thousand and ten, a caution light was added at the intersection. So before that was added, there were thirty-two total crashes at the intersection, and after that was put in, they looked over a period of four and a half years, and there were seven accidents that occurred, so. Might be a bit annoying to have a four-way stop, but it's still you you cut down severely on those crashes, so it's identified as a definite benefit from that perspective on the the area that was a concern for a number of years there. Okay. In the change from RA to CBI, one of the first things you look at is the district description. I've highlighted a couple of things here for the board's consideration, one of which is the term generally appropriate. So if you see this description and you go down the list, the next highlighted part, you're within a community or regional node, it's possibly appropriate or generally appropriate. Any other area, highway business on NC or US Highway, commercial quarter, or these areas served by water and sewer. So you start with that, and then you move into the land use plan recommendations. And sites located in Area Three, the lime-green color, it does encourage mixed use near a node where if you have housing, you would have a commercial component and also contacts to that where it's sidewalks or other connections via open spaces mentioned. Another recommendation mentioned is performance-based standards that do promote that. Compatible development pattern is appropriate if it has a commercial component building in with that residential. More specific, we are in this community node for that intersection. And the first bullet point here, permitted commercial uses that support in that second line, pop the existing populations need for retail goods and services are encouraged. And then when it talks about nodal development, that's diff- different from strip development, which if you think like along industry where you have multiple businesses, individual cuts, that's strip. Nodal would be one central access point and operation within that development, as opposed to individual cuts throughout a site. Being that there's a layering effect to this too, you you start also that the plan in general, there's a reference for rural business. Take the node aside and just look at the the type of road. If you're on an identified thoroughfare neighborhood, business is usually considered appropriate. And then there's some additional standards here for building size, appearance standards, and setbacks that may be appropriate. I think in this case, the node may take precedent over that rural business reference. Okay. Staff did send notice to the folks that are colored here in this map. I think this gentleman didn't get noticed last time, but now owns it, so they received a letter. Folks within a hundred feet and a little bit more, we went beyond that boundary, just a slight amount. We also in the notice had to include this quasi-judicial component. Might be confusing, but in the subsequent action of the board, there's a request for this temporary lay-down yard on land north of the area to be rezoned. So another sign was put up for that, but the same notice went out to these folks. We included some others here for that lay-down yard because part of it would be requested on this part of the site. Planning Board did recommend denial, four to one. They adopted, depending on how you want to look at it, statement of inconsistency and unreasonableness, if you will. They do have a statement here. I think one of the things the planning board struggled with was direct access on Ketner Farm as opposed to one of those thoroughfare streets. The original hearing, the board voted to table the request for additional input from DOT, if there's any other options that could be could be considered for access, and when it came back, the the plan changed slightly to be a committed public administration use on Lot Two, so full access would be granted, but access would not be granted to a retail store, health service sector use, or any of the others, if it was to be accessing Old Concord, and therefore, the planning board did not feel that was appropriate and voted to deny the request. There were several folks that spoke, I think there were six citizens that that spoke. I detailed that on page seven. And on page eight, I put a few more things in here for the board to consider. When when you have a node or any thing identified on the land use plan, the board will probably recall last year, we had a rezoning on Highway Sep- or one fifty, it's in a commercial quarter or at least the quarter reference, but the board deemed that or had differing opinions on the applicability of that, just outside of Forest Glen. This has a node, it's that first layer, then you look at it from there, and I think the planning board had that issue with access. So noted on page eight was two fairly recent decisions. One, Z O eight fifteen in Liberty, it was a node that the board considered, and that request was denied based on turn lane improvements and site distance limitations, traffic accidents, and just a lot going on in that small area of Liberty. And SNI three twenty-two, where it had strip development out there at Briggs and one fifty. So any questions to the board that I could answer?
Shane, can you just go back to the watershed numbers, please? Where are we at right now?
Say what? I have that in the staff report. Are you speaking of the current allocation we have, or?
Where, how how much of that has been used up?
Since ninety-four, we have approved six parcels totaling twenty-six acres out of a thousand and fourteen. We have nine hundred and eighty-eight and a half acres left.
Okay. So this would just kind of a drop in the bucket compared to what we got left?
Yeah, two acres for this lot, none for Lot One.
Um, I'm really curious about this administrative use. Why is that any different than in a business or anything else?
Good point, I failed to mention that. One thing that's important for this grouping of public administration use, police, fire, ambulance, all those are permitted are right now in the RA District. No rezoning is necessary for those. You do see gaps here. These portions, I mean, there's jails within this locate ninety-two would be a jail, and some other uses are not. So I defer to the applicant on the process of incorporating that in this request. We talked about it a little bit, too. There's some benefit to it from their perspective, so for what it's worth, that two-acre area could be left out of the rezoning.
So if it wasn't rezoned in this manner, can it be ro- rezoned in to a different category? Or is it just that this one category?
It wouldn't be required. They could just leave that, you know, delete the two-acre area from the request, and fire department, for example, would be permitted.
Okay. You were not asking the question correctly. Okay, so let's say we leave the two acres off. What would happen two years from now if somebody came in and they wanted to change the zoning on that? What could it be used for then?
If the board approves this request, right now, that is earmarked only as public administration. If this section is cut out, then no, it it can be left RA and be developed as such. The only board action would be the watershed allocation to exceed twelve percent.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Shane?
Can you bring the map back up with the showing where the CBI zones and the the blue sides there? So how many acres are these two lots? He says the ten-acre section there.
It's right at ten acres, nine and some change.
And they're going to, right now, use four of it, maybe the front two for the retail and the fire station would go at the front. That's, he said one's two acres.
So the total's nine-point-six-four. The Lot One is seven and three-quarters or so, and that's necessary to to make the built-upon area under twelve percent.
Ah, so they, so if that had ten acres, the only two things, if this was approved, is those two. You couldn't put anything else in those back seven acres.
Correct.
All right, anything else? All right, Shane, we.
Go ahead.
One more thing, you're on the right one here, Shane. How far is the driveway for the first lot from, I don't know, wait. From Old Beatty?
How far from here to Old Beatty Ford?
From Old Beatty up to Ketner Road.
This is Ketner Farm.
Yeah. So the driveway's there, and then how much? Yeah, and then how how long is that portion of the road?
I'm not a hundred percent certain.
I'm really curious. Does, if it's a busy retail store, I'm really curious about whether there'd be some traffic congestion there?
That does meet DOT's requirement. That was positioned to comply.
All right, anything else? All right, we would invite the applicant, if the applicant would like to speak. And we'd love to hear from you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, while he's doing this, thank you. My name is Amanda Hodierne. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner and applicant. I'm an attorney. My offices are at eight oh four Green Valley Road in Greensboro, Suite two oh two. Thank you for this opportunity and for considering our request. As I mentioned, I represent the property owner, Dynamic Developers of the Carolinas LLC. With me tonight, I have Mr. Steve Ross from that entity, the principal who's heading up this request. Also have with me tonight our civil design engineer, Mr. Justin Church from Blue Ridge Environmental. Justin, in case we have any questions of a technical nature like we were just getting into. And we also have with us tonight Captain Sheeks from the fire department, who can answer questions regarding what we'll talk about in terms of that Lot Two and the proposed use and reasoning for that involvement in this request. I want to make a couple of statements before we get into the merits of the case, because it was raised in the staff report and apparently in the notices that went out. Some similar, or one one coincidental commonality between this case and the next case, which is the property owner, and that parent tax parcel that you saw in Mr. Stewart's presentation, that the next case, completely separate from this, which is a quasi-judicial special use permit hearing, is involves the property that it would be the remainder or the leftover from this parent parcel. We're talking about the ten acres that we're going to look at here that would just be the proposed use list that we're going to talk about on Lot One, and the proposed use of the fire station that we're going to talk about on Lot Two. It doesn't involve any of the remainder. That remainder is also owned by my client. It has completely different vision and and plans for it, and I'll let the the actual applicant on the on that special use permit talk about that because it's not my case. I don't know anything about it and has nothing to do with this case. So you won't hear any comments from me about that. I didn't want to, want there to be any confusion about that or any misunderstanding about potential overlap. There is none. The other thing I want to mention is that this is a land use decision. You know, we're here for a rezoning request, meaning that the question before you and the analysis to answer that question is, what is the highest and best use for this property? So we're not here to talk about eventual tenants or business operations. We're here to establish the correct framework for the proper land use so that any tenant who meets that framework can be successful in this location. So that's what our our case is crafted to do, and that's what we look forward to discussing with you tonight. So when we look at land use, the first thing we we think about is location. What makes sense from a locational standpoint? What common sense-wise would go here and would serve the area well? And the first thing we notice about this location, you see it on the red, the red dot here, and this is, of course, a very wide view, because I wanted you to see it in context of the interstate corridor, in context of the roads to Kannapolis, and where it sits in your county as a whole on on these travel, these common travel routes. And and that's going to come into play later when we talk about why it's designated the way it is in your land use plan. So this is, this is the location along major, along a major thoroughfare at an intersection with another major thoroughfare in close proximity to your interstate corridor, in in close proximity as people travel to and fro the population zones in your county. This, you can just see it a little closer up, again, close proximity to that interstate corridor, it's a direct shot as you exit that interchange and travel your thoroughfares to get to the common locations where people need to go, the critical mass of where people live in the county and where they're employed. So when we think about land use in addition to location, we want to look at a land use pattern. What makes sense in terms of how uses are grouped together? What is the framework, and how do we add to it in a reasonable and sensible way? So here along Old Beatty Farm Road, we already have the established thoroughfare that we've talked So here along Old Beatty Farm Road, we already have the established thoroughfare that we've talked about that. It's well-traveled. It's carrying people to and from where they already need to go. That's important because you already have trips here. You already have a critical mass in this location. And we also need, we also have people living here already. We have residential in this area. We have people coming and going from their jobs. So what we need to do is provide the opportunity for goods and services in this area because we want to capture people where they already are. We want to meet their needs where they're already going to be so that they don't have to get in their car or go out of their way to make an extra trip to do the things that they already need to do. That's why we want to put this along the thoroughfares. That's why we want to put it where people are already living and going to be. And we want to create symmetry along those thoroughfares so that you don't get out of balance or you don't get one side of the road handling all that in-and-out traffic and the other side not having that same thing. You want to balance it well along the thoroughfares. So this land use request does exactly that. It focuses these types of uses right up on the thoroughfare and it balances it with the commercial that already exists on the other side of the road. Again, you see here, this is our parcel that we talked about. I called it a parent parcel. So you see it all outlined in purple. The red star indicates roughly the, the ten-acre portion up at the front along the thoroughfare that we're talking about in this case. The land use pattern, why does that matter on a more micro level in, in regards to this case? This proposed zoning creates a much-needed transition between that major thoroughfare that we talked about and Old Beatty Farm Road and the interior residential uses that are located north of the corridor. Katner Farm Road and other, other neighborhoods north of Old Beatty Farm Road are heavily residential. We have people living in those areas, and that makes sense because not a lot of people want to live right on the major thoroughfare. DOT is not likely to approve a lot of driveway cuts right on the major thoroughfare. So you want to bring your commercial uses up to the road and create that transition that serves the traveling public and then transitions back to where people live. The proposed zoning capitalizes on your existing infrastructure. You've made expenditures here. You have this major improved thoroughfare that NC DOT has just, you heard from Mr. Stewart's report, has recently invested in to improve it, to make it safer. So you want to capitalize on those investments and again, capture the people that are already using those investments, meet their needs where they are and utilize the investment that you put in your county in this kind of infrastructure. The location is ideal for the proposed use, which is customized to include only the types of uses that should locate along a major thoroughfare and that need that infrastructure that already exists here. We talked about this. The proposed zoning balances the north side of this growing commercial corridor with the south side. You get some symmetry. And lastly, the proposed zoning would provide existing and future residents with needed supporting services. Again, people are already here, so let's meet them where they are with their daily needs. And that's not just commercial needs, that's also institutional needs, which is how Lot Two comes into the mix, and we'll talk about that more. With development, with population growth, with people, comes more institutional needs. Water, fire access, police protection, that's water access, that sort of thing. So we have to plan for that as well. This is, as Mr. Stewart mentioned, a conditional zoning request. So that means not only are we asking for a district, but we're narrowing that district and tailoring it so that you can have more predictability, more transparency, and better customization to make the land use compatible with the surrounding area and all the other factors that you have to consider. So that's what you see here. This is the same plan you saw in your presentation and your staff report from Mr. Stewart. So we see that ten, roughly ten, ten-acre area that's carved off the front of that parent parcel. That's Old Beatty Farm Road along the bottom of the, the screen there running diagonally. And that's Katner Farm Road running along the left side of the screen. So you see here, we'll talk about Lot One first. That's the larger lot with sort of the jagged perimeter. A couple of things about this. You see the site plan that calls out many aspects from your technical review process. So when you submit a conditional zoning plan like this, the staff gets the benefit and the developer gets the benefit of saying, how's this actually going to work? Is it feasible? Can we meet aspects of the development code that are going to be applied here? Should this actually proceed to site planning? And so this means that we know the parking counts are correct and they fit. We know the impervious surface calculations, that built-upon area that Mr. Stewart talked about is meeting that twelve percent limitation. We know that the trucks can maneuver this site and get in and out without having to back up onto the road. That's been reviewed. And importantly, and a big factor in this case, is that NC DOT has reviewed this. Our engineers, and you can talk with Mr. Church about this more if you would like to. Our engineers have been in talks with the division office here, and we know exactly what they are considering and what they would and would not allow in terms of the way this site can be accessed and how it has to be accessed safely. So we're required to go through that initial preliminary review now in order to put forth a site plan here that Mr. Stewart can present to you. But importantly, the driveway permits don't issue until later, until an actual complete and specific site plan comes forward, and that's important. Mr. Stewart mentioned, you know, the trip generation for an insurance office is different than the trip generation for a gas station or a retail user. So that's why the driveway permits come later because NC DOT is the absolute and final word on what happens on these roads, and they get to tell us and we don't get to negotiate. We don't get to say, yes, but, or what if. We have to say, yes, thank you, or no, thank you. Those are the only two options. So they tell us how this site can be accessed safely, where it can be accessed, and what improvements have to be put in to do so. So you heard this again from Mr. Stewart, but I'll just reiterate, in this case, they've said you can only access from Katner Farm Road. You have to put in a right turn lane with the storage amounts that we tell you so people can get out of the thoroughfare, move over, decelerate, and make that right-hand turn. You have to widen Katner Farm for that roughly a hundred and fifty feet until we get to the driveway. You have to restripe it, and then that's where we, that's as close as we're going to allow that driveway to be to that intersection. So those are all things that are mandated to us by the, by the one agency that's, that has authority here. So that's not up to us. That's not up to your planning staff, and that's not up to discussion or referendum. It, it is what it is. And, and so that, that is another benefit of conditional use zoning that requires a site plan because it allows us to figure all that out first and to know, know those site planning considerations and know those parameters when we're here talking to you. Additionally, Lot Two, we're also showing here, and that's really why Lot Two is, is a part of this case. Because it's a conditional use request, because it's about transparency and is this really feasible? Because we, we have a, an end use in mind. This, our, my client, the developer here is been in talks for a long time with Chief Zimmerman and the Fire Department because there's, there is a need here. The county has a need for a fire department in this area. So my client also happens to be developing residential lots on the rest of this parent parcel. Through that, through that work and commitment to this area, he's learned about this need. He's learned about the need for a better IMO rating here. And the way to do that is to have a fire station close by as this part of the county grows. So this was an opportunity to do that. I talked about the fact that not only do, as population grows, do we need commercial services and goods, but we need institutional ones. And in this location, as we understand it from Chief Zimmerman, the need is for a fire department, and that is the goal and objective of my client, to create that opportunity by giving this land to the Fire Department to build a fire station here. Potentially an emergency services, emergency management station has also been discussed. So that's why we termed, I think the question came up earlier, why is that, why is that the permitted use proposal? Well, that's why, because that's the umbrella term for these types of services. If, if we need to remove jail or, or prison, that, those types of things from that useless, we're happy to do that. That's not the intent. That's not what's going to happen here. This is the sole goal, and that's what we're showing here. So by showing it here and by being forthright and transparent in that goal, we've also been able to vet that with NC DOT. So what we know is that, yes, they would give a fire station or an emergency management, ambulance station a full access movement on that frontage there, but that's about the only use. They would give a full access there, too. They also would not allow, this is the reason they want to know uses, they would not allow cross-access between Lot One and Lot Two because they don't want somebody who's coming out from, you know, getting their hair done, crossing through where the fire trucks need to get out in an emergency. So they want those to be completely separate driveways that load and unload onto completely separate roads. So that, that's why there's no cross-access for that particular use. And I've talked a lot about uses, so Mr. Stewart covered this, but I just want to emphasize again, as conditional use, not only do you get the site plan transparency, but you get customized uses. So you, you guys know your permitted use table. The CBI district has dozens and dozens of permitted uses. This case only has thirteen. So these are the only thirteen things that could happen on this piece of property. As you see, they're all tailored to do exactly what we've noted this piece of property needs to do. It needs to serve the population that already lives here. So that's exactly what this useless is tailored to do. Lot Two, there's only one permitted use, public administration. That terminology, that, that heading is pulled exactly from your use table. That's why it reads that way. That's for consistency and understanding so that we all know what we meant. We're all speaking the same language. Again, if we need to remove jail from that list or any others, we're happy to do so. The intent is either a fire station or an emergency management station. That's it. And of course, as been, has been mentioned, the owner of Lot Two would apply for the SNIA at the time of development. The only reason we couldn't do that tonight is because the fire station hasn't been designed yet. We don't know exactly how their impervious surface is going to be laid out. We don't know yet what their final numbers are going to be. You guys know this better than I do, of course. Their sequence of events is that they can't even begin to design and lay that out and have a site plan until that's a, an approved site and something that has been decided upon by the county to be a site. So right now, this is just about setting these properties up to become these highest and best uses. So we're trying to, trying to arm Chief Zimmerman with that ability to, to go forth and, and turn this into a viable site that he can then put a site plan on and, and come forward with his SNIA application. We've talked about this already. You've got conformity with additional site planning considerations built into this request. NC DOT has already weighed in. We, we know that they, they have put their thumbprint on the design of the improvements here and the access points here. They would again have to review this and again be the only people who could approve a driveway permit. So you get that additional level of review and involvement by them, the trusted agency of experts, to make that decision. And then again, of course, we've had the benefit of review from your planning department to ensure that the standard development regulations can be met on this site. Street yard setbacks, building setbacks, impervious surface calculations, parking, buffering, landscaping, all those aspects that we've mentioned. So the other aspect that's always important in any rezoning analysis, as we know from our state statutes, is compliance with your comprehensive planning documents. So the part of your comprehensive plan that covers this location is the East Rowan Land Use Plan. This property is located in Planning Area Three. That tells us that the future land use recommendations here are a mix of uses encouraged in or near the community nodes within the planning area. This may include commercial components with residential development to serve proposed and surrounding neighborhoods. That's exactly what we've been talking about so far tonight. We look a little closer, and indeed, yes, this property is located within one of those community nodes. So it's important to remember that these community nodes were chosen in, in particularity. There's only a few of them. They're not everywhere. They're in certain strategic locations that have been chosen and designated to do exactly this goal, to bring goods and services and commercial provision to these residential areas and to these thoroughfares where it's needed because of the other growth that's happening in the county. So here, permitted commercial uses are intended to support those existing population needs for retail goods and services, which are encouraged in those community nodes. I'm reading here directly from your plan. Examples are included but not limited to convenience stores, gas stations, office space, restaurants and retail services and businesses. So we relied heavily on that guidance in bringing this request forward and tailoring the useless. I want to also note that one of the reasons the comprehensive plan guidance is so important, in fact, so important that the statutes tell us we have to consider it, is because those documents are made in neutrality. They're made when boards like yourself have the time and space without a controversial decision or without a pressure decision in front of them. It's about long-term vision and planning, what your objectives are for your county when you sit and have the time and space to think about that in neutrality. So that means they're a good, tried and true tool to use when these isolated decisions come before you. Are they in keeping with the goals and objectives that you've already said you want to adopt for your county? So we're pleased that that analysis lines up here tonight. So in conclusion, as you consider the two prongs of a rezoning request, reasonableness and in the public interest, I would submit to you that this case meets both of those tests. The zoning conditions provide proper use controls. We talked about that. A narrow list of uses that are tailored for this location, elimination of inappropriate uses. The site plan commitment provides full predictability and transparency, not only for you, the county, but also the rest of the community in knowing that this is how this could happen here, and it's the only way. If there was any substantive change to that that came and got applied for, Mr. Stewart or his colleagues would say, no, that doesn't match the conditional zoning here. You have to go back and get it rezoned. That's a firm commitment to how this would happen if approved. The public administration and services component to this development proposal is for the public good and in the public interest. This is where a private developer is seeking to also help with the, the overall burden of growth and development and say, hey, you know, we can do something about both of those things with this request. We can do some private commercial goods and services, and we can do some public goods and services here that are needed for the area. This plan proposal also furthers the goals and objectives of your adopted East Rowan Land Use Plan. We've talked about that. It's an important part of your analysis, and it furthers strong planning principles for land use pattern by keeping this development up along the thoroughfares in the nodes where it needs to serve populations that already exist so people aren't having to create unnecessary trips to go do things that they're going to do anyway. So again, we have Captain Sheeks here from the Fire Department. We have Justin Church here from our civil engineering. Steve Ross is here with me, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the board? I think that means you did a good job.
That offer for rebuttal if you need it. Thank you.
Shane, anything? You? No? All right. So what we'll do now is we're going to have, we're going to open up for a public hearing. I've got about, it looks like seven folks have signed up. And so we'll have you come forward. Just tell us what your name is. We have your address on here, so you don't need to announce that publicly. But we'll begin with Tyler Withorn. Is that, did I pronounce it right? We, ah, I could go I or E and I blew it. I'm sorry.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is Tyler Withorn. I live on Katner Farm Road. I'm a land surveyor, a small business owner, and a homeowner. Back in November, when the planning board considered this rezoning and denied it, many of the neighbors here today turned out. We told them about Katner Farm Road. It's a long, dead-end street. It's narrow. There's no lane striping. It ends in a tiny cul-de-sac where nearly every car who attempts to turn around ends up in my front yard. It's the kind of road that when two cars meet, both have to slow down and figure out who's going to pull off to the side to make room to get through. We gave the planning board our concerns for the traffic this store generated, forecasted to be more than seven hundred trips in and out each day on a road where currently sixty trips is the, is the norm. We told them how this commercial site plan left no space for retailers, tractor, trailer trucks to turn around, forcing them to awkwardly back out into Katner Farm Road. I realize that the site plans and the, the engineer asserts that there is room, but what a truck can do and what a truck will do are two different things. And if you look at that site plan, I think it's fairly clear that a tractor trailer is not going to take the necessary steps to stay out of the road and, and, and not block the path of Katner Farm. And we told them about the school bus stop, which is right there at the intersection of Katner Farm Road and Old Beatty Ford, just a few feet away from the main entrance of where this is going to be. The planning board weighed all of this over two meetings and gave the developer opportunities to make changes, but in the end, the board ruled that this rezone was a hazard, this driveway was a hazard to the residents of Katner Farm Road. I think the planning board got it right, and I hope you will confirm their decision. Tonight, there was, the developer made some mention that, you know, NC DOT approves this driveway. It's their safety. It's their decisions to do that, and I don't disagree. But as a surveyor, I work with DOT. I work with these groups, and, and what I see is that DOT has a rulebook. If your request checks every box, good, bad, or ugly, they're going to approve it. There's no subjective criteria. There's no look at how is this actually going to impact the, the community? And so just because it does check those boxes still doesn't mean it's the right fit. All of that said, I do want to offer a different perspective that we didn't talk about at the planning board, and some of that was brought up this evening. As part of this rezone, the developer's site plan includes the retail and the fire station. These two projects, as has already been noted, have very different impacts, yet the developer has kind of proposed this unholy union to consider them as one. Why? The developer's application sort of suggests that this is all or nothing, that in approving this, or excuse me, in denying this rezone, Rowan County might lose a terrific location for a needed firehouse. But I don't believe that's the case. And here's why. The planning office says a fire station can go here. No rezone required. We all agree with that. And nothing is stopping this developer from moving forward with the fire station right now. What the developer states that they're doing this to meet a community need, but I think what might be omitted is the personal need. Section 22-111 of the Rowan County Ordinances, the codes governing water point sources and public fire protection. This developer has been open about his long-term plan of constructing homes across this parcel. Now, we got the temporary use thing coming, but eventually the plan is for homes. Four homes have so far been completed, but even the plan that's in there has, kind of indicates a phased major subdivision plan for at least 10 more. With 14 or more proposed homes, this developer would trigger the requirements for fire prevention detailed in Section 22-111. That ordinance requires all lots within that major subdivision be within one road mile of an approved water point source. As I believe Chief Zimmerman would confirm, these new lots would not be in compliance. If the developer wants to build these homes, he's got to follow the ordinance. He can dig a pond, he can construct a tank, or according to Chief Zimmerman, he can make way for this fire station. Now, I obviously can't speak to the developer's intentions, but I think there is a clear line of thought here. So if you're concerned that denying this rezone would also kill a needed fire station, I'd ask you to reconsider. It's very likely that this developer is motivated and incentivized to see the firehouse move forward either way. Commissioners, this landowner has thrown a lot at us tonight. The next agenda item looms over all of us. I ask that you confirm the findings of the planning board and deny this developer's application for rezoning.
Tyler, thank you. Next is, is it Don Safrat? Mr. Safrat, welcome. We're glad you're here.
My name is Don R. Safrat. I am a semi-retired Lutheran minister. When my wife and I built a modular home on Kettner Farm Road in 2002, it was a red dirt country road. Red mud when it rained. In 2008, Kettner Farm Road was paved with a thin layer of tar and gravel up to the standards of a residential driveway. It has had another layer of tar sprayed on it several years ago. It is not designed to withstand the stress that will be created by, as the builder suggests, of more than 716 vehicles, including the delivery truck that come daily, each having to be counted twice because there is no outlet on the north end. Anything that comes into Kettner Farm Road from Old Beatty Ford Road has to come back around and be counted a second time, the same vehicle. Especially since the exit point of the convenience store, turning left only out of the convenience store lot on Kettner Farm Road. I can answer the question as to how long that driveway is back to Old Beatty Ford Road. 500 feet. One tenth of a mile. It's in the first one-tenth. The entire Kettner Farm Road is less than seven tenths of a mile. From the same entry in and the same exit out of Kettner Farm Road onto Old Beatty Ford. When I think of site plans and traffic studies, I think of traffic flow. This may be no traffic flow on Kettner Farm Road at the south end leading to Old Beatty Ford. I continue to be amazed, and we were having these understandings back at the planning board meetings, the development team seems to have no comprehension of what it means to have a dead-end road. Dead-end road means no outlet on the north end. If you were to go further north beyond Tyler's grassy cul-de-sac in his front yard, you would be directly into the wetlands of Dutch Buffalo Creek. Currently, sometimes, as I am in my front yard at my mailbox, cars and trucks come by looking for a way out on the north end. They will always have to turn around if the cul-de-sac in my neighbor's front yard. The design of this plan will not lead to traffic flow. It will lead to traffic stagnation and congestion, effectively being a bottleneck of stalled cars and trucks. So many vehicles in less than 500 feet coming and going at the same site. That will be the recipe for congestion, for no movement and no traffic flow. Some of the people that come by stop and we talk. They say, and you saw on the picture, there is a yellow with black writing, "No Outlet" sign at the very end of the beginning of Kettner Farm Road. They say, I didn't know that this was a dead-end road. I say, well, didn't you see the "No Outlet" sign? Some of the people will either say, no, I didn't see it, or yes, I saw it but didn't pay attention to it. That sign that's already there is not effective. Another factor in this decision, and I have heard some information from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, is that they are proposing to put a complete traffic roundabout on Old Concord Road and Irish Potato Road. That's 1.7-tenth mile beyond the four-way stop in Fox's Store going south. This will totally sever Old Concord Road for the duration of the project and cause a traffic detour requirement. This detour will come about because all southbound Old Concord Road traffic will then have to turn right on Old Beatty Ford Road at the four-way stop. This will greatly alter and affect the already stressed traffic trying to get into and out of Kettner Farm Road in that one 500-foot strip. I plead to the Rowan County Commissioners to follow the recommendations of the Rowan County Planning Board at the October and the November meetings to deny their request to change the zoning from agricultural, residential to commercial business. The plans sound good. They're at the wrong site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safrat. All right, next on our list, Don Richmond. We typically limit these to three minutes. It'd be great if you could try to do that.
Important, sweet, I'm not much of a public speaker anyways.
Well, we'll judge that.
Terrifies me more than getting up in front of a group of people and having a talk.
No, you're fine, sir.
I'm going to try my best here. So my name's Don Richmond. I live on Kettner Farm. So my issue with the rezoning to the CBI are simply this. The added safety concerns for the bus stop at the end of Kettner Farm and Old Beatty Ford Road. Any and all added traffic will increase the chance of something happening. Not only personal vehicles would be turning on the Kettner Farm, but commercial vehicles as well. Now, I don't know what the percentage would be to the added risk, but let me ask you this. How much are we okay with? Are we okay with adding 20% extra risk to personal safety? 10%? Maybe five is okay. My personal opinion that any added risk is too much. Why add risk if it's not necessary? I also think that the added traffic would continue to go further down Kettner Farm and would be unstoppable, just as Mr. Safrat had mentioned and Mr. Wither had mentioned. Just a couple of homes alone that have been added on the Kettner Farm, the traffic has greatly increased. Quite frankly, I'm tired of watching the traffic go flying up and down the road past my house and using my driveway for a turnaround. So I hope that this panel can see and recognize the concern and deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. You did okay. Good. Gene Ho Weisner? Well, when we get to there, just remind me, okay? Just scream as loud as you can. That way I'll make sure not to forget. All right, thank you. Scarlett Fleming? Scarlett, welcome. We're glad you're here.
My name is Scarlett Fleming. I do live near the proposed site, quarter of a mile approximately. I have some images that I would like to share with the board. Photos have all been taken in the last week. The first image is of the first driveway before the current homes were built there to the left on Kettner Farm Road. There is a tremendous amount of water, as you can see, that's not able to pass through the drainage ditch there. The second image is across this property where, I don't know, a lot of debris has been piled and you can see the water accumulating in front of it. The next image is of what I presume you may be thinking is a buffer zone behind the property that's proposed as a fire department where it has been clear cut and there is hardly any vegetation left there. The next image also shows this area. It is a very steep gully. And the next image after that is the runoff that is immediately following this property. This is still in the zone that is being proposed for the fire department and CBI. The next image, you can see a road there that's going a little further down Old Concord Salisbury Road. The top of the image shows the clear-cut area behind the property and then this is the driveway. Sorry, I think that is your property. Yes, it butts up against this property. The next image is further down. This is the Burgess property. They were notified, which is across the street from where I live. The next image is on their side, the Burgess side. That is the creek overflowing with very, it looks like a lot of erosion is probably happening because it's very muddy water that is entering the creeks here. The next to last image is on my side of the property. It's actually my mother's property. And this is Dutch Buffalo Creek. This is part of the watershed. This is the creek overflowing with the runoff from the top of the hill, which is where the site is. And this is the, the last image is of this area today, actually this afternoon, about four o'clock. And as you can see, that's a tremendous amount of water has come down the hill following a storm. And these storms are getting worse, obviously. Clearcutting has increased the amount of muddy water that is coming through this area. So my concern is with the lack of a buffer for the watershed, a lack of a buffer for the farm use that this creek supplies. There's multiple farms along this creek. And so I would like to see if there is anything that happens in this area that sufficient buffers would be considered to mitigate this type of runoff and contamination of our watershed. And the image that was shown of the current CBI, there is also another store. It's called Express Corner. It's a half a mile from this site. So there's already another store right there. It is at the mouth of Chalk Maple. It's called Express Corner. It was not shown as CBI on the documents that are shown, so maybe it's not. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Hannah Withorn? Welcome, Hannah.
My name is Hannah Withorn and I live at the very end of Kettner Farm Road. I want to clarify one thing that's been said a lot tonight and that it being a dead end and having a cul-de-sac. The reason that the Rowan County School bus stop is at the end of Kettner Farm is because a school bus cannot physically turn around in the cul-de-sac. The right of way does not extend the full, whatever it is, 60 feet. And so we do not have a full-size cul-de-sac in our front yard. And so a school bus can't actually, they would have to back all the way back out down the road. And there are several elementary-age students, our daughter being one of them, who's in first grade at Boston, who actually ride that school bus every morning. And so for us, this is a real, a very real concern. I want to talk about what's in the best interest of Rowan County residents. In 2015, Rowan County commissioned a study of what they wanted the Rowan County brand to be. And what they found was that people saw Rowan County residents as country, as rural, as quiet. And I think that's why many of my neighbors moved out to the area that we did, is because it is that. It is residential agricultural. I think if you polled our street, we would tell you that we 100% support the residential development in that area. I would love for my daughter to have a friend up the road. That would be fantastic. The lot size on a residential, on a rural agricultural is one acre per septic and well regulations. And so that is healthy development. That is smart growth in Rowan County. If we want to talk about the Economic Development Council of Rowan County, the four targeted industries are advanced manufacturing, office and technology, healthcare and logistics and distribution. So if we want to consider the zone, the rezone uses, we need to focus on the targeted industries that Rowan County has agreed that they want to bring into our area. I can tell you what I want as a Rowan County resident. I would love to have a daycare at the end of my street. I have a two-year-old. It is impossible to find childcare where I live. I would love to have a park. I would love to have a steady, small business that operates Monday through Friday. If we look at the strategic goals outlined in the EDR and the Forward Rowan Plan, it is to recruit targeted businesses, so those four that I talked about. It is to target economic growth and support small business. An insurance firm is a small business that puts local money back into our local economy. If we look at some of those opportunities up there, specifically retail, if you look at that site plan and you compare it to other retail stores, it's not a grand leap of thought to look at discount retailers. It matches the site plan of almost every discount retailer presently in North Carolina. We have nine discount retailers within a five-mile radius of our home. We do not need it. If you look at the impact of those retail organizations on community, not only does it erode community identity, because as spoken about in the plan, aesthetics are important. Discount retailers don't take that into account. They don't look at what's in the community node. They don't match the aesthetics that we have in our, in our local area. The drive-through store, which has been there since the 1960s, which is why it's zoned as CBI, matches our aesthetic. You can drive through. I can buy a can of worms, go fishing down the street and I'm good to go. A discount retailer is not going to match that. Not only that, they only contribute eight to nine jobs in a given area. 92% of retail, discount retail employees make less than $15 an hour. So if we want to look at jobs, we want to improve economic development. I'm all for it in Rowan County. We need to look at what those targeted economic opportunities are and we need to go after those. Not come up with an ideal site plan. It can't be ideal if we don't know who the targeted, the tenant is going to be. I know, I'm almost done. Oh, the last thing I want to talk about is the road. So yes, Kettner Farm is a public road. It is maintained by NC DOT. However, Old Beatty Ford and Old Concord are considered major arterials through the area and that's per DOT standards. Kettner Farm is not. It is a Level Seven. It is the lowest value. It is the lowest domain of any NC DOT regulated road in North Carolina. It cannot sustain this type of retail traffic. Yes, you can put signs up, but we all know people are not going to read signs. They're going to come to the end of our road. We have two small children, a six-year-old and a two-year-old. Our land wraps around that cul-de-sac and our children ride bikes in that cul-de-sac. They play in that cul-de-sac. Okay, so if modifying the site plan is not up for discussion per the developer, then we have to go with what the planning board said and vote no. We have to support our own local community members who live here, who are not coming in from Greensboro, who are not flying in from across state lines, who actually know and care about what happens in Rowan County. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lisa Burgess. Lisa. That's all right. All right, we'll move you over, okay? All right, so that's everyone we have signed up to talk during this public hearing. All right, we'll close the public hearing and commissioners will discuss this. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, you want... Okay, yeah, come on. Sure. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll try to be brief and respect everyone's time, but I do want to address the points that I just heard. So I'll just go in order here. We heard a lot about Kettner Farm Road and its current condition and its status and what it can and can't do. And I want to point out that Kettner Farm Road is meant to collect traffic off of the major thoroughfare or arterial and pull it off those thoroughfares so that we don't have people turning off of the main road that's meant to move traffic to do little one-off activities, whether it's go home or turn into a gas station or an insurance agency or a daycare. That's what these side roads are meant to do and that's what NC DOT is trying to make it do in this case. So yes, right now it's serving residential uses. It's been built to those standards, but roads develop and are improved based on the development that goes there. That's why this project carries with it several road improvements on Kettner Farm Road, because NC DOT says, okay, if you want to put a different use there now, you need to upgrade and improve for the road to be able to handle that. So we've talked about the improvements, the widening, the additional pavement, the striping that would have to go on there so that that road could handle the type of traffic for this use. That's what that driveway permit process does. And we've seen a glimpse into that with the improvements we talked about tonight. The signage, yes, we do understand that Kettner Farm is a dead end, that it can't be extended due to the environmental circumstances at its northern terminus. So we have talked to the NC DOT about that signage and making sure that folks exiting this proposed parking lot understand they can and should only turn left to go back to that thoroughfare, to get points east, west, north, and south, that they should not turn right. That's not going to get them anywhere. We heard a lot about the bus stop. We agree with that. We can be a partner in that goal. Bus stops also are not static and engraved in time. As conditions change and different improvements are made, bus stops move and follow the need and the safety concerns. So we would absolutely be happy to partner in that request and take that, carry that mantle to the school board, even build a new school bus stop. My client, Dynamic Developers, Mr. Steve Ross, you have to remember, has a vested interest in this whole area and these home sites and wanting them to be successful and thriving and desirable home sites. So he absolutely is a part of that same goal to create safe and, you know, a livable experience on those lots. And we can be a partner in that, certainly in this school bus stop aspect, very easily. We heard a lot about the NC DOT process and how it just checks boxes or this isn't the appropriate place for this use. And I think what we have to remember is that while yes, NC DOT does have a process that they follow and methodologies, tried and true engineering methodologies that they're utilizing, they also are ensuring that each private property owner has access to their property. So what we don't want to do is take the circumstances, the die that has already been cast here, the circumstances that are in place no matter what use is standing here in front of you, and allow that to say, well, this property can never be used because it can never have access. We have to understand that that decision has to be made safely and has to be made by the experts and we all have to abide by it, but it should never be used to say that a property can't have access and can't be utilized. We heard about the planning board's decision. And Mr. Stewart sort of mentioned this, that I would say that the planning board ended up, after a lot of discussion, really predating its decision on the access from Kettner Farm Road, which is not something that any of us have control over. So again, to base the decision on that and the die that already, I say this phrase again, the die has been cast here. That's where the access for this site is going to be. So I don't think that it is a viable or strategic decision to say that this rezoning is not compatible or consistent or reasonable for that consideration when the experts and the agency that we entrust to make that decision has said that that's the way that it needs to happen. So I want to keep tight to the players that we have in this process and the reasons that we have them. And lastly, I agree a lot with what Hannah said. She said we need to talk about smart growth and we need to think about utilizing our roads the way that they're meant to be utilized. So that's exactly what this plan is doing. Smart growth is about utilizing the plans you have in place that adopt those principles. It's about supporting the targeted industries with the supporting uses from bottom up. That means housing. That means goods and services that serve those houses so that employers can locate here, so that the people want to take the jobs that are created because they want to live here, because it's a well-rounded 360 community. It's about utilizing your infrastructure so people don't have to make extra trips. That's what smart growth is and that's what your comprehensive plan is trying to do. So when we deviate from that and we make ad hoc decisions based on isolated pressure points, then that's when we don't follow smart growth principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ma'am, I have a question for you before you sit down. So what I've heard you say is that your company is very concerned about safety and wants to contribute to the community. So my question is, one of the safest ways of moving traffic is to create a roundabout. So would your company be willing to pay for the upgrade of that road, putting a roundabout in it just above the driveway of the company or the lot? So if people come out and they turn right, they can just go right around?
So again, that's not a decision that we can even stand here and say. If I said yes, that we wouldn't get to go build it. That's a DOT decision. And if they're the ones who said, this is what you need to do to make this safe, then that's when we would have to make that analysis. And if that's what needs to be done, then that is what would have to be done. But roundabouts have a lot of different factors when they're utilized and when they're not. And again, I'm not an NC DOT expert, so I don't purport to be and I'm not going to say if that would be the right tool here. However, I do know that that's not the tool that they purport.
Well, I've had lots of experience with the DOT, just happens to be in Wisconsin, and they have told me several times that if we do it the way you want, there's going to be people that are dead. And I said, if you don't do it the way I want it, they will be dead.
This was in Wisconsin that you're talking about?
Uh huh, yeah. So it's not always about what the engineer says. It's a lot about common sense.
But that is the...
And the local people, the local people know what works in their local community. And I think that's what these folks are trying to get at tonight.
Thank you for that comment. And I do appreciate the local purview, but what I understand from the development process that someone has to follow when they submit to the county is that we have to go through the protocols and the agencies. And that's the mandates that we have to follow. So that's all I'm talking about tonight. That's what we've done and that's what we're presenting. But thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for council? Or if not, commissioners? Close the public hearing and we'll discuss amongst ourselves.
Mr. Chairman, it's quite obvious to me that this is something that these citizens do not want and I don't really see the benefit. I would like to see the fire department come, absolutely, but another convenience store? Give me a break. I mean, it's really not something that's going to be beneficial to these citizens and there's too many detrimental things to overcome to make this a vote that I think would help this community. I appreciate the people coming out and voicing their opinion because it's something we don't get a lot of times and we don't know what you want. But if you tell us what you want and show us your objections, then we can make an informed decision. And I really think that we're going to make an informed decision. I applaud the planning board for taking this on. I was on the planning board for a long time and it's not an easy job because you get to make decisions that don't have any validity to them because it has to come to the commissioners. But they're our sounding board and they listen to you and understand that you're not here just to get up there at that microphone. You're here because you have an issue and it needs to be resolved. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to deny the Z1123 request and then let the community work out with the developer about getting a fire station.
I'll second that.
We have other discussion first? Are we just jumping straight to that, going straight there?
Yep. Well, I'll say, I went out the other day and rode around. Really, I was leaning, even when we came here today, you know that road? Hear me? So I went out there, I went out there the other day and rode around. And that is a very narrow road. But really, I was kind of up in the air because I know the importance of that fire station down there for that area. And I think in the future, that fire station is definitely going to be needed there, not just for if houses end up there behind on that street, but just the whole general area of what's going on down there. But I didn't realize that they could build it anyway without the changes needed. So I'm going to agree with the traffic issue. I mean, that's a very tight area. I drive, sometimes I drive the tractor trailers in the garden. I know that a lot of times the drivers will take the easiest way they can, not necessarily the proper way, go across the curbs, through the ditches, whatever they need to, but...
Is that a confession?
Yeah, I've done that, yeah. But anyway, so I guess I'll agree with Craig on that. We need to find a way to get the fire station down there, but I don't think that road is really kind of going to be an issue, having retail going in and out of that little strip of road there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first of all, for me, the fire department doesn't need to be rezoned. They can use it the way it is now to do that. And we certainly appreciate anybody that is willing to donate land for the fire department. Certainly is a great need and a great thought for him to do that. But as we see by these pictures and our experience, water is one of the most harmful things in the world when it gets out of control. And I can just imagine a retail business with the flooding like we've had this last couple of weeks and the damage that would be done in the, not only in the parking lot, but maybe even in the store when it's handled through there. So the road, this road, Kettner Farm Road was not made to handle retail traffic in it and it doesn't handle water very well, certainly looks like here. And I just don't think this meets the blend of the community very well. And Old Concord Road has turned into one of the most traveled roads that we have in Rowan County because of all the development that's going on. And just, you know, adding more traffic to that is just not very good. So I agree with our planning board and I think they made the right decision.
So I don't know why we're surprised that retail wants to follow residential because that's the way it happens, right? We get questioned a lot, hey, get us a Target here, get us this or that. And it's not the way it works. We don't call them up and say, hey, just come here. They, a lot of times, show up. We make it on to their hit list because they see that we have the economic demographics and the density that they need in order to, however they determine that based on their business needs. So certainly not surprised that this happened. Something struck me in staff comments because I know that it really comes down to because it does qualify, is it appropriate? And staff comments, it says, "Much like a corridor overlay, thoroughfare frontage or other cited factor from the land use plan, the recognition of one or more of these features," in other words, because it has one or more of these features, "does not absolve an application from further scrutiny of its appropriateness, which may be revealed in a detailed site plan." Like Mike, I rode out there and took a look at Kettner Farm Road and when you read in the complete record here in the plan, the traffic count according to this could increase from 461 additional vehicles to 1303 per day, depending on what it is, even at the lower number, 461. And I can't imagine the 1303 is a gas station. So could we use retail out that way so you don't have to drive miles to get something? Sure. Could you use a convenience store? I'm not familiar enough with that area to know if that's needed or not. But as I sit at the intersection of Kettner Farm and I just say, what in the world? We can't do that. So I'm going to be a no vote on this. And so we've got a motion and a second. Anything from you? Anything? No? All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so, well, we would have to, yeah. All right, I'll offer up these one at a time as a motion for a statement of inconsistency. Z11-23 is inconsistent with the East Area Land Use Plan and not reasonable, nor in the public interest based on the following factors. And this will reference East Land Use Plan. One, Section 21-32F indicates CBI is generally appropriate in areas identified by an adopted land use plan, including community nodes, although the subject parcel is within a community mode requested uses and the conditional district are too broad to ensure future development would, quote, "support the existing population's need for retail goods and services," and therefore inconsistent with Plan Recommendation D on page 30. We have a second for that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Secondly, is inconsistent due to the inability of Lot 1 to gain direct access to either thoroughfare road, negates the benefit of being within a community node and its subsequent validation for commercial zoning, therefore driveway access for commercial use on a dead end local road is not in the public interest. I make that in the form of a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Third, I'd like to make a motion that's inconsistent due to Section 21-61A identifies the conditional district procedure as a method of submitting an actual development proposal and, quote, "not for securing early zoning for tentative uses, which may not be undertaken for a long period of time," unquote. In contrast, the submitted site plan include a speculative building and an operational area... area labeled, quote, "conceptual for discussion purposes only," unquote. Additionally, the plan exceeds the low-density watershed requirements, which the application indicates a future owner will apply for an SNIA at the time of development necessary to construct. Make that in the form of a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lastly, is inconsistent due to the plan depicts two sites functioning independently rather than following Plan Recommendation E on page 30, which encourages nodal development. A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion, then we already voted to deny, so that should be it, right? All right? So, that is that, and we'll move on to the next item. Next item is a quasi-judicial hearing for TEMP 01-24 Dominion Energy, North Carolina. Like to read as required by law. It's called a chairman's speech. The hearing for consideration of TEMP 01-24 is now in session and will focus on an application submitted by Dominion Energy to operate a temporary construction lay-down yard on part of tax parcels 137012, 165, and 166, located along, excuse me, the 200 block of Kettner If you feel that any member of the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions. One, we will approve the permit as requested or with additional conditions. Two, continue the request, or three, deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may now come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible, and we welcome Shane Stewart, who will present the case for the county.
Sure, sure. Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you.
Also, we have quite a few folks who are signed up to speak during public comment on this, on the hearing. We have about 14 or so, and you will also need to be sworn in. All right, everyone, good and sworn in? I hope it's, I hope it sticks. All right, Shane, you're up again. Welcome. We've missed you.
Shane Stewart, for the record, 402 North Main Street, Salisbury. All right, so this is the temporary use permit request for, again, same owner, Dynamic Developers of the Carolinas. The applicant in this case is Dominion Energy, North Carolina. I listed 200 block, but it stretches for, you know, quite a distance on Kettner Farm Road. This time, it's part of parcel 13712, 165, and 166. Area outlined in blue represent the collective property acreage of those three lots, and let's look at this map here that provides a better depiction. What we just looked at was this area here that the board turned down. That is the 10-acre area of rezoning, not part of the lay-down yard. This parcel here is not subject to this request. That has been sold. It's, the address is 220. So, the request is for these two parcels, this portion, and also the larger piece on the upper side, north of the previous rezoning boundary request. Take a step back, and this came from Dominion Energy's website depicting the M 71 Kannapolis to Concord 24-mile corridor project. So, definitely going to be difficult to read, but here's the county line, Rowan on the north. We're beginning here at North Enigville Avenue and West C Street is the blue line and the project quarter. It goes between Landis and China Grove, comes down Dougherty Road, just north of the Old Beatty Ford Road intersection with 85, and then comes down here to the Old Concord, Old Beatty Ford Road, and the star represents that location for the lay-down yard relative to the overall quarter. For what it's worth, and based on the measurements I took, it's three-quarters of a mile from the halfway point. It might be deceptive looking at this, but I measured the whole thing, and that's what my math said. You continue down going into Cabarrus County, and this is Highway 601, south of Concord, the full perimeter. But this project here, from the application, it has some referenced information here, so it's for the future improvements along that corridor for growth, et cetera, in the area to serve what you see here. And a lay-down yard is a component of that project, but we're not talking about the overall pipeline project here on that 24-mile. It's just the lay-down yard, and you have a packet of information here from SNME on their design. So, a lay-down yard is a large site that's used for the base of operations for this project. So, you're going to have the employees coming to the site, and you'll have some equipment that's not on, not being used on this, on a specific part of the line, might be present. You'd have other features such as the pipe that's delivered at the site, stockpiles of dirt that's excavated as during the project when they install a line that would be present on this site. So, again, their base of operations, it'd have some construction trailers, and we'll see that as we go through the site. Think what might be helpful also, in the context of the previous maps we've seen and the parcels that we were speaking of, this area of the yellow outline is the, the full 37 acres. Not all of this is part of the lay-down yard. So, here was the rezoning area requested. This parcel, again, has been sold, and this area here to the, the west side and also to the east. But when you also look at the internal boundary, this red line depicts the limits of disturbance, which that's a term from any kind of erosion control plan, what area is changing, where is the silt fence going to be installed? So, anything beyond this red line is not being disturbed. So, this collective area here is about half the, the overall project acres, 36 and 17 and 3/4. I did not, in these numbers, include the right-of-way acreage, which will be some work done in the right-of-way. As far as the lay-down yard details here, let's see, north there is cut off, but this is Kettner Farm Road, and this would be north on this side. So, on the eastern side, coming down this perimeter here, you have a very large gravel area, and the majority of the employee parking would be here. And this, this is a thumbnail image, kind of hard to see at this level, but you can zoom in on your PDF. It just depicts what you might see in that location. This is typical. Here's aggregate storage, fancy term for gravel. So, you might have gravel stockpile here. Construction waste is, in the narrative described, is any soil that is wet and would need to be dried. That's why it's called construction waste. It's not anything else, at least from the depiction in the narrative. Have a temporary sediment basin. When you disturb all this land, you need, have a measure that captures that runoff. Again, this is temporary based on the project, which these are common with any project, residential or commercial, but in this case here, it's definitely temporary. There's no post-construction stormwater that's required. Driveway connection here on the north end, this is one of four that is, has been approved by DOT. They're all temporary. Stockpile of topsoil there. Terms of the description in the plan, it's indicated that the height would be no more than 15 feet for the soil stockpiles. Also, just for reference, from the plan, you have distance to nearest dwellings throughout, both on the previous slide before you get to the site plan detail and also the site plan detail as well. Coming south, this is the rezoning boundary here we talked about earlier. So, between the, the northern part and then the southeastern section, you have additional stockpile areas, another sediment basin, some more soil, 8-inch pipe, 12-inch pipe, in this termed of engineering bending area. So, this will be where activity might occur, where they're welding or bending the pipe to take off-site to operate or install, excuse me, and the pipe fitting storage area. This little racetrack around is, and called truck matting, or you may see those on some projects, a lot of utilities providers do. I think Piedmont Natural Gas on Highway 70 near Second Creek has it right now. It's a heavy-duty hardwood that's laid out where a vehicle rides over it and doesn't compact the ground quite the same as just driving over the dirt, obviously, or if gravel were added. So, that is a temporary measure for traffic to go around and disperse that weight. Here's two additional access requests that has been approved. And across the road in Kettner Farm, this is the fourth location. There's just little close-ups of those. Every site's going to look different, but that gives you a general idea of what it may look like here. On the west side of Kettner Farm, the third basin would be installed, series of construction trailers, just like you would at any construction site, temporary office trailers, and in this location here, they would have material storage, like pod units or transfer truck boxes to store tools and other equipment, additional parking, another truck mat area to drive around, and you have material storage, fuel storage, additional soil stockpile. This section here, three lots that have houses under construction owned by the Dynamic Developers, and you have this lot here that's been sold recently. Additional close-ups of that, you can see the, the truck or temporary matting here for the, the wood to drive across, and a typical of the soil stockpile. From those plans, since this is a project that is from a utility provider, it would not be reviewed locally from the erosion plans. That would go to DEQ, either Mooresville or Raleigh for review. So, all that that you saw with the design, the erosion control components, that goes to the state for review and not locally. Did want to point out, this was not in your packet, it wasn't available at that time, but on January 10th, DOT approved a driveway permit for those four access points, and it's probably the longest driveway permit I've seen. It had 41 pages to it because it, one of staff's concerns too, and we talked with DOT, was the road condition. Upon this two-year temporary permit, what would the road look like after construction? So, luckily too, with the Department of Transportation, they indicated that it would be a requirement of this permit that a, and I use the term tar and gravel, but a asphalt surface treatment would be required upon post-construction operation, and then a sealant added to that road. And as a condition of that permit, also, they would be required to have a bond for one year, once the, the site's been certified, the, the road's been completed and improved, for one year they have a bond where DOT could go back and require additional improvements if there were problems that showed up. I skipped over a lot of detail because I think most likely it'll be shared, and for the sake of time, I won't go into a lot of those, but a couple of the highlights with the time duration, the temporary use, we have this criteria A through C. Historically, we may have looked at a few in a different manner, but I feel like that this language is quasi-judicial in nature, evidentiary fact-finding, so you want to approach it in that manner. But it is a, a two-year process where, once they, whatever, if the board approves, they would have a two-year window. They could always come back on item C and request a subsequent extension of the board, but I would interpret this to be a two-year operational allowance. They could get started because they're not going to start, if the board approved, they wouldn't start tomorrow. So, maybe a month from now, two months, two years of operation, but also, at the end, you noticed on those site plan sheets and in the narrative, they're going to have to reclaim this site back to what it was, post-construction or pre-construction, and it's in a watershed, so this will be a temporary built-upon area that exceeds 12%. And per the state's allowance, that is acceptable because it's going to be removed. And with that too, let me hit a few other points. The operations, Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I mentioned in the report, the truck traffic and deliveries there. Do want to point out, on, let's see what page that was, on the staff report, I noted page 1 and 2, so initially during initial stocking of the site, it's 20 truck deliveries, and then after that, for the first month, and then after that, it'd be three. That should be three daily, not three monthly thereafter. But I left that open-ended. Does have a six-foot chain link fence around the site. And back to items A through C. Do have some example findings if the board wants to consider those, and the applicant may as well too, but just wanted to be clear on, see what that would indicate.
Shane?
Yes, sir.
So, just so I understand, so two years, if it were approved today from tonight, or you said that whenever they started operations?
I would think it'd be reasonable that the board could allow them a two-year period of time and not start the clock tomorrow, but, you know, for what it's worth, because I believe they may have a month or two possibly for approval at the state level for their erosion plan. Because their, their document says a request of two years starting February, but if you read the material, it looks like they may not start until May.
And then you mentioned a, an extension, so I know a lot of times projects run over, so they'd have to come back here after two years to say, we're not done yet. So they'd have to come back here after two years to say, we're not done yet, we need more time.
They would have to. They didn't request a vesting beyond two years, so they would have to come back.
So if they weren't done and we said no, what would they, what would happen then?
Good question.
I mean, would we find them or the state finds them? Or we, sheriff goes out there and put locks on their property?
I would defer to them. It, it seems like that two-year is going to be tight. So I think that's a realistic possibility. But, you know, whether that means they, they work on more than 13 hours a day. Um, I mean, I'm not sure how to answer that.
Gotcha.
Um, and then lastly, the notices that went out, again, it's a similar notice to the rezoning. It included both legislative, quasi-judicial. We put a different sign up and one's identified on the, on the site, not on both sides of the road. Additional folks here got notice beyond the scope since it included this portion of the site. And with this, we do have findings of fact that are required. Obviously, no statements are necessary, but this did not go to the planning board. It's not required to. It's just a quasi-judicial request that would just go straight to the board. Any questions?
Yeah, Shane, I, going back to the road. It seems to me that as paper-thin as that road is right now, and I, how much traffic is going to, maybe I should be asking you guys. I'm sorry. Did the applicant give you any idea as far as what kind of traffic you're going to see on the Kettner Farm Road?
Numbers, types, or both? We have in the staff report, the anticipated number of, you got your 250 employees, you have the truck delivery numbers, what all types of vehicles? I, I can't answer that. But obviously tandem trucks, dump trucks delivering soil and aggregates.
Okay.
You done? You're done? All right, thank you Shane. All right, and then Ms. Ross, thank you for being here and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commission. My name is Catherine Ross. I'm with Parkrop Adams and Bernstein, and I do represent Dominion Energy. As Mr. Stewart said, and as you know, we're here before you for a temporary use permit for a lay-down yard. Um, we want to thank Mr. Stewart and all of the staff that we've talked with over the months in preparing for tonight, for their professionalism and their guidance in working on the application. We are going to try to be brief. It is not lost on me that it is 8:15 at night. However, as this board knows, and as has been talked about, we have a burden in this matter because it is quasi-judicial. Uh, we must provide competent material and substantial evidence on which the board can make, I'd say, two findings. The first is that the use of this property as a temporary lay-down yard does not endanger public health, safety, or welfare. And second, that the use as a temporary lay-down yard will not have a substantial negative impact on adjoining properties. The third prong that was just addressed in terms of timing, I'm going to borrow your presentation if that's okay. The request is for a temporary use permit for two years from the start of operations. Uh, the narrative application talked about anticipated starts. Um, it, it has pushed back just a little bit. Um, but the, the request is for two years from start of operations. I'm going to maybe get some technical help and see if we can pull up our presentation real quick.
And you want to?
Nope, oh, right. Yes, that person's in the back. Forgot her name already, met her earlier. Wonderful. Happy to go into slide.
Call the wizard.
I know. Nice. See all the same words, right? Shane and I pulled the same words from the same word. Um, so again, two years. Our evidence tonight is going to focus on the two findings that this board has to make. First, I would ask that you accept into the written record, the temporary use permit application, which consists of the permit form, the project narrative, the site plan, and the project corridor map. We would also ask that the staff report be, be entered into the written record. Two things that I will briefly address, as I did to where Commissioner Klussman's question with respect to traffic counts and the road. You, you will hear evidence tonight of the traffic count, which is 500 bidirectional. Um, you will also hear about the restoration of Kettner Road and the maintenance of Kettner Road during the use of the project, um, use of the site as a temporary lay-down yard. So we look forward to putting that evidence in.
Oh, if I could just interrupt you for a minute. My concern is the heavy, heavy equipment going in and out and how, well, I lived on a road where it was paper-thin and it didn't take long for heavy equipment just to rip it up. Um, do you know, there's people living past your site, correct?
Yes, ma'am. There are a handful of residents that are past the site. And you'll hear testimony from both Dominion and their expert with respect to maintenance of the road during operations, as well as one of the major concerns that has been talked about previously, and that is traffic control. Uh, this is a temporary lay-down use, very different from retail. Um, Amanda talked about the difference between the rezoning you just heard and the quasi-judicial. You know, again, to put the quasi-judicial here, excuse me, application that's before you now, to put the distance between that, this is a very different use in terms of a, a lay-down yard. And the fact that it is temporary is a significant factor and the reason we're under this section of the ordinance. Um, you will hear from, first from Brandon Acock. Mr. Acock is a fact witness from Dominion, Dominion Energy, who will talk about the need for the lay-down yard. There were questions about, or, or conversation about the pipeline. Uh, he will talk about the pipeline project and the expansion of natural gas that that brings to this community and the benefits to this community from that expansion of the natural gas service and availability. The, the lay-down yard is critical to that 24-mile pipeline that you saw the corridor map of. You will also hear from Chad Jacobs of HDR. Chad is a licensed engineer who manages the team that has been designing and, and, excuse me, engineering the lay-down yard as well as the pipeline project. Mr. Jacobs will be tendered as an expert witness at the appropriate time. He will expand on some of the conversation we just had, Commissioner Klussman, related to traffic control, road usage, erosion and control sediment. After Mr. Jacobs, we are going to stop our presentation because we want to get to your questions. We have a burden, we want to put in our evidence, but we want to get to your questions. But we have several individuals with us this evening, including Eric Hartwick of SMNE, another engineer who focuses on environmental matters and erosion control and sediment permits. These individuals are available to have, ask questions that you have. I will try to conduct and point to the people or pull up the people that I think will best answer the question when it comes. Um, if we're not answering your questions, we trust you'll let us know. Again, we're going to try to move through quickly. So with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Acock for his testimony and remind him to please state his name, address, and business employer for the record.
My name, excuse me, my name is Brandon Acock, 800 Gaston Road, Gastonia, North Carolina. Um, I am Dominion Energy, North Carolina is my employer. Uh, first off, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners, thank you even the community that's came out tonight. Um, uh, got an important matter, kind of want to talk to y'all about this afternoon. Um, but I'm here primarily tonight because I manage the Dominion Energy team that's responsible for the design oversight for this project. Um, in particular, we call it M-71 or the Canapista Concord project. Um, a little bit background on myself real quick. I've been with Dominion Energy since 2005. Uh, for the last 11 years, I've been in a leadership role for the engineering and construction team. Um, today, Dominion Energy serves nat- natural gas to over 650,000 customers throughout North Carolina, including over 4,000 in Southern Rowan County. Um, customers such as homes, schools, medical centers, manufacturing facilities, those kind of places rely on natural gas for their everyday needs. Um, the approval of this temporary use permit required for this project will continue to deliver on that critical mission. Um, you heard, you heard Catherine briefly mention about the whole purpose of this lay-down yard. Uh, what started was the pipeline. We had that 24-mile pipeline that you saw connecting Enixville to Concord and going through various communities. Um, but as part of any pipeline of that magnitude, you have to have a lay-down yard. And I'll touch a little bit on that, and so will Mr. Jacobs, he'll touch on a little bit more. But as you saw, it was centrally located, um, right there on the corridor of this pipeline. And, uh, but that pipeline is going to drive a lot of potential economic growth, reinforce the system and, and allow for even residential growth along that, that corridor there. Um, this project is for the new 24-mile pipeline. It's nearly 60% of it is in Rowan County. So I know that map was this evening, uh, but approximately 60% of the pipeline is in Rowan County. Dominion Energy and its partners have been working together for nearly two years, and we've been engaging with landowners, uh, local officials, the Department of Transportation and others to try to plan for the most safe, safest and successful pipeline. Um, we make this a priority to work with the stakeholders. Um, that's critical to us. Um, we have a track record of it on this project as well as others. Uh, more information on this project can be found on our website, um, that's out there, including the corridor map that you saw, as well as that fact sheet. There's a fact sheet out there as well. Um, this is a high-priority Dominion Energy project, and we're excited for some of the opportunities it brings to the community, actually. Um, for example, through Dominion Energy's partnership with the National, uh, it's the National Theater for Children's, I get the acronym messed up. We've offered programming to schools along the way. Uh, Landis Elementary actually was the first one to participate in the gas safety and conservation program. We also have other planned opportunities. Uh, this, this includes first responder training. Um, we also have, um, sponsored volunteer event and possible grants. Uh, DE is committed to be, being a good neighbor and a good community. We've been here since the 1930s, uh, so it's been, been here a while. This temporary lay-down yard is important part of this project. Again, it will centrally house, um, it will centrally house our, our, our base camp per se for our construction trailers, material and storage, as well as workspace for our contractors. Uh, this will allow for the safe and efficient operations and therefore less impact to the community. Um, you're going to hear here in just a second from Mr. Jacobs about the design and permitting for the project, in particular, the temporary lay-down yard. Um, to help us, we did engage with HDR, which is a comprehensive engineering, environmental and construction firm, um, and they've helped us lead, uh, the design of this project. Um, so just real quick, uh, I, I just want to briefly, briefly talk about, um, the traffic control. We've heard some things tonight, um, and from the, the folks along Kettner Farm Road. Um, this project is going to be primarily along the road shoulder. We're going to have traffic control measures, not only at the pipeline, but we're going to have them at the permitted lay-down site. Um, it's important that we keep not only our workers safe, but also our community safe. That's something we pride ourselves in. Um, as I mentioned, we have a track record, uh, just over the last three years, matter of fact. Um, we had the INCA Intermediate School that was directly next door to our lay-down yard in Asheville, North Carolina. So it's something that we're accustomed to. We didn't not consider this, these things that you're here tonight. We've tried to consider everything while balancing the project as a whole. So, um, with that, I appreciate your time, and I'm going to turn it over to Chad.
As Mr. Jacobs comes up, I'm going to approach the clerk and hand out three exhibits that he will reference. The first is Mr. Jacobs' resume. The second is an affidavit of Matthew Kunkel from SMNE. And the third is, we got smart, we made a one-page site plan for you. It's going to be up on the screen. As we went through the presentation, we realized the awkwardness of the two-page site plan. Maybe a little easier to see, but we're going to hand you out 11 by 17.
Hey, uh, welcome. So, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, in order for the record to reflect that, uh, Mr. Jacobs is an expert, we have to qualify him. So please bear with us for just a minute. I'm going to give him the mic mostly. Please state your name, employer, and business address for the record.
Chad Jacobs, HDR Engineering. I work at 301 Grant Street, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15219.
Provide your educational background, post-high school.
I graduated from the Georgia Institute of Technology with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a professional engineer and, uh, registered in Florida, Louisiana, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and West Virginia.
Would you please describe your current role and position with HDR?
I'm a program manager. Uh, my current role is managing this, uh, this program or this project for Dominion Energy and HDR. Uh, I oversee not only the engineering group, but the, the permitting group, the right-of-way acquisition group. Uh, when we get into construction, we'll have, uh, scopes of work, and I'll oversee that as well, such as inspection and observation.
Mr. Jacobs, can you please briefly generally describe your experience related to the design and development of lay-down yards, such as the one we're discussing tonight?
I've been a consultant engineer for 20-plus years. I have designed and permitted, uh, lay-down yards, uh, approximately 50-plus in my career to date.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we would tender Mr. Jacobs, excuse me, as an expert engineer in the design and construction of lay-down yards.
All right.
With that, I will ask Mr. Jacobs to testify in the narrative as Mr. Acock did. And, uh, as he wraps up, I will come back to the, to the podium to, um, wrap this up and address your questions as promised.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, board. Uh, my first several slides, actually Shane did a wonderful job describing the location and actually the, the overall flow of, of the lay-down yard. You should have this map in front of you here. I did want to, uh, talk about a couple of, of things on this slide here. Um, Shane pointed out the, the gravel entrances. We do have our DOT, temporary DOT driveway permits for that. Um, but the, the driveway that you see in circular on both the east and the west side of Kettner Farm Road, uh, there is design intent with that, um, that we'll get into. Uh, but it's, the, the, the purpose is to, uh, move the traffic off of Kettner Farm Road and allow queuing in the traffic into the lay-down yard. That, that's what, uh, one of the drivers of the overall size of the lay-down yard. Um, Shane was correct in that the waste, the construction waste, uh, storage area, that is where we would bring, um, wet soil to, uh, dry. Uh, and then, once it's dry, we would collect and dispose it of at registered landfill. So, uh, this facility, uh, the lay-down yard will not endanger, uh, public health, safety, and welfare. When we approached this, uh, about a year and a half ago, looking at this site, we used industry standards, state, uh, laws and rules, and then Dominion's internal guidance, uh, to guide us in this. So we did look at, uh, potential bufferings. You saw it, or you can see in the site plan there. We have, um, soil stockpile areas, pipe stockpile areas. We also provide distances away, uh, from homes. Those stockpile areas, those pipe storage areas are to increase the buffer from the intermittent work areas that we have inside the traffic circles, if you will, of the lay-down, lay-down yard itself. That's to not only, um, provide, uh, that buffer, but also provide noise mitigation, things of that nature, um, also to, uh, allow traffic, uh, through the site itself. Uh, in addition to, uh, the lay-down yard, uh, we'll be providing traffic control measures, as, as Brandon said. Uh, what does that mean? That means we anticipate, uh, traffic in the mornings, in the afternoons, as employees come in. Um, our work hours, uh, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Uh, that means that we're, you know, starting work at those times. Uh, and then scheduled truck deliveries. Deliveries aren't like when Amazon comes to your house and you, it's unscheduled. We know when they're coming, and we have traffic control people onsite to move that, that, uh, that traffic as quickly as possible off of Old Betty Ford, off of Kettner Farm Road and into, and queuing into, uh, the lay-down yard. That's, that's the whole purpose. Also, that traffic control, um, uh... Also, that traffic control personnel will allow local traffic access. You guys have seen when there is roadside construction and traffic controlmen let local traffic through, and the construction equipment pauses, and while that traffic comes through, that is also part of their function. As we said, we do have our DOT permit. I would like to confirm that it is a condition of the DOT permit for the driveways to maintain and repair, even from a restorative effect, as we leave Kettner Farm Road. So we have to bring Kettner Farm back to its existing condition or better. Yes, ma'am? Oh, okay. And there is a bond in place, so I know there was a question, you know, what happens if we fold up or whatnot? But that bond is in place to guarantee the long-term viability of that restoration. So I heard tonight, you know, testimony of erosion sediment control and stormwater contamination sediment and things of that nature. By our DEQ permit, our erosion sediment control permit for the site, we have to actually mitigate what you're seeing out there today. So in the plan, you'll see perimeter controls, silt fence, collection ditches that will actually guide and control that water onsite inside our lay down yard to the sediment basins themselves. The sediment basins are designed to drop that sediment out, and then you're releasing clean stormwater. Okay? It's not just releasing it. We're also controlling the volume or the rate of water. So you don't get the big flooding type events off of our site. How do we prove that? Through our design practices, but also the DEQ looks at our design and verifies that our design is able to do that. And then they approve the permit or they issue the permit. You also have in front of you documentation from Matthew Kunkel. He is the engineer of record. He couldn't be here tonight. My apologies. With me tonight is Eric Hartwick, his supervisor. As we finish our presentation, if there are detailed, you know, questions for erosion sediment control or environmental, we can bring him up to answer those. I would like to say that the lay down yard does not impact floodplains, wetlands, water bodies, or other environmental sensitive areas. Our almost 18-acre lay down yard, that is what I'm talking about there. So the lay down yard will not have a substantial negative impact on adjoining properties. So, you know, we talked about the restoration, the long-term restoration. I'll get into a little bit more of what that means and how we go about restoring that. But again, we've, through diligent design, we have tried to centralize the work that goes on there. You saw the pipe bending area. That is where we pull pipe into it. We bend it, we cut it, we might weld it to other assemblies. We take that out to the job site. That actually allows us to not have all of that out on the job site along the road and create a more congested area. So there's a functionality to that. We've also surrounded that and buffered it by a 15-foot-high, you know, wall of, you know, topsoil or dirt, in this case, or pipes stacked up. And that, if you look at your site map, you'll see that running along the perimeter itself. You know, as far as the, you know, the potential, we don't, right now, there is, there's no odors or fumes that we anticipate leaving this site. It's not, the lay down yard does not generate those types of things. You see a fuel storage area on your area. So, you know, in order to prevent, you know, groundwater contamination or soil contamination, we provide secondary containment for our fuelings. We also have, you saw the timber mat picture that Shane brought up, you know? This is actually part of the fueling area, a designated secondary containment fueling area that no other vehicles will be fueled at the lay down yard outside of that fueling area. And when equipment parks at night, it's part of Dominion's guidance to put drip pans under the equipment to catch any incidentals. Let's see. We talked about stormwater controls. And again, it's the current or pre-construction levels. Based on the evidence seen tonight, I think that our controls will actually improve what we're seeing, you know, at the site today. And then getting into restoration, you know, of the site. So we've already, part of our erosion sediment control is we lay, whatever grass or vegetation is there now, we clear that off. We put geotex still down on the ground to separate anything that we might put above that from the native soil right now. So there's actually a barrier that contains the gravel or the timber matting, things of that nature. That helps build structure, so we don't have excessive rutting and things of that nature. The timber mat itself, any weight limit that we would have out there from heavy pipe semi-trucks or an excavator or things of that nature, you won't have it, you know, driving ruts into the lay down yard or the soil right there. As we leave, we just reverse that process. We start pulling out the timber mats, pulling out the gravel, the geotextile. The sediment basins there, they would be filled in. We would start establishing the existing grade that you see today. We would establish that, and it would be back to its original grade. In addition to closing out our DEQ permit, we have to establish vegetation. So the long-term, you know, sediment deposition along into the ditch lines and further north along Kettner Farm Road, the vegetation would be there to stabilize that sediment. And we can't leave the site until we've proven to the state that we've established that vegetation and they close out our permit. That's as a detailed permit condition. In my professional opinion, we do not endanger the public safety, health, or welfare. And we do not have a substantial negative impact to this site or the surrounding properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have proposed conditions. I don't want to jump ahead too far. I promised that we would get to your questions. But I did just want to make sure the board was aware. We have put forward here in the presentation proposed conditions that are in alignment with the testimony that Mr. Jacobs just gave. And certainly would be open to discussion on additional conditions, you know, as might be needed. I don't believe staff proposed specific conditions, but certainly any board-specific conditions. But at this time, I would tender our witnesses to the board for any questions.
Yes, Catherine, or actually, Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
I assume that before you do anything, that the perimeter is going to have the erosion control installed.
Yes, ma'am. That would be the first thing that we would do, is we would come in and establish what we call the perimeter controls. Before we even start clearing, you know, the existing vegetation, there's no trees out there right now, but the grasses and things of that nature. We would want to control that with those best management practices.
I'm not sure who should answer this question, but was there any other site looked at to put down this lay down station other than this one place? Was there any other sites looked at?
Understood. As we've been working on this design for quite some time, and we had already covered that this site in general is at the midpoint. It's also close to 85. And being the midpoint, we can send pipe and materials to both ends of the project. We did look at other sites. But when you start factoring in the location and the transportation infrastructure in the area, there was enough benefit there and available land that we chose this site.
And I can appreciate that, but I guess my point is, did you look at other sites that were in neighborhoods like this one?
Sure that, I don't know how to answer that question as far as looking in neighborhoods. But we did look at other sites around, and we were trying to minimize our impacts to the community. And I think through our diligent design and hopefully through my testimony, we've shown that we have gone to a great extent to try and mitigate any harm or, you know, impacts to those residents.
Thank you. You know, I don't think any board from Rowan County has ever worked with economic development as much as this board has. And we are all for your project going through as quickly as possible. I just don't think, and I might just, I'm not the brightest bulb in the hall to begin with, but I don't think you understand how overbearing this project seems to be to this community. And Old Concord Road has traffic issues now, and trucks and employees. Nobody's ever said how many employees coming, that I understood anyway. I am sure that you folks are going to put land back just as good as it was. Possibly, well, you couldn't do much more harm to this road after what I saw. But this project just seems to be overbearing. When I look at this, I'm not looking at your engineering and your layout of this project as much as I'm counting houses around here and houses up through this. This road doesn't even have an exit. If you had a major problem at the entrance of this road, everybody up through here is stopped dead until you can clear out whatever project there is here. So picking out this particular road seems to be not the best decision that you make.
All right, any other, a couple of questions, yeah? So I see here you said you're going to put a six-foot chain link fence around the property. Is that, is that one of those, is it a fence that'll be embedded in the ground? Or is it one of those that you rent that you can just pick up and climb under?
It would be an embedded chain link fence.
Okay. Do you think, and I guess you would testify, but my full-time job is a police officer, so I'm constantly going to construction sites for things being stolen, broken, damaged, graffiti. Do you think the crime in the area is going to go up at all with this project in the area?
No, sir.
So there'll be no more crime there? Are you going to, are you?
No more crime, but I don't anticipate any additional crime.
Are you going to have like night guards, anything like that, security?
We do not have any night guards at this time. We could be talking about that, I guess, in a bit.
Is, maybe you're the person, but normally, I think, when we have these, somebody usually shows up, testifies. It's not going to affect the property values of the surrounding area. Is that you also?
But we do, we do have somebody.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, thank you. Oh, yeah, well, normally they come up and say, this is not going to affect the values, so I didn't know if you were that guy or not.
Oh, don't exit quite yet. We would be happy to, we have Rich Kirkland, who's a registered appraiser, MAI certified, who can speak to the lack of substantial injury to property value. I will note, that is not the standard for a temporary use permit, but we anticipated that the question may come up, and certainly we'll have Mr. Kirkland come up and testify. Before we do that, if I may, to answer a couple of the questions, I'd like to address a couple of the commissioner's questions, I'd like to ask Mr. Jacobs to address a couple of things about the site plan, so that we, if we may, so we don't lose those, and then we'll shift to Mr. Kirkland. I'll put you on my other side.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobs, in talking about the location of the site and in the application and in your testimony, you've talked about traffic control personnel onsite, correct?
Yes.
And is it correct that there will be traffic control personnel onsite at all operating hours of the lay down yard?
They would be.
And is it your testimony to the board that from a traffic control perspective, those, the traffic control personnel would be trained to ensure that there is only, you know, one semi-truck coming down at a time? And if any other semi-trucks that would be on the site would be held in order to allow passage along the road?
Yes, and I know you didn't mean to, but you came from the north, but from the south.
I did, sorry, apologies.
They would be coming off of Old Betty Ford. Traffic control personnel would be directing that semi-truck into either the west or the east portions of the lay down yard, depending on what they're delivering. And the queuing would start there, and then we would wait until the trucks, if there were multiple trucks, into the site, and then we would reverse the process. So you wouldn't have the bidirectional, you know, figuring out how a semi-truck's going to pass one another kind of thing. Also, that allows us to, you know, stop a process if local traffic has tried to come in.
And is it your testimony that after the initial stockpiling of the lay down yard, that there's an anticipated three semi-truck deliveries per day?
That is true.
And that those would still typically be scheduled semi-truck deliveries that would be known when they were coming?
That is true.
And I believe there was a question in regards to the number of employees. I just want to make sure the record's clear on that. Is it correct that there's anticipated to be about 250 employees?
That is correct.
And it's anticipated that those employees will be coming in in the morning, at the beginning of the shift, and then in the afternoon at the end of the shift, again, at scheduled times?
That is correct.
And such that traffic control personnel would be present to ensure that that traffic flowed off of Kettner Road and onto the site?
Yes.
While we're on this subject, we heard some conversations before, and we've, or Akok, I believe, addressed it, about pedestrian traffic on Kettner Road, and specifically, you know, children and a school bus stop that is at the corner. Is it your expectation or your testimony, not just expectation, that traffic control personnel would be in place to control traffic all the way through, not just at the specific driveways?
Correct. It would be all along from Old Betty Ford to the driveways of our lay down yard.
And my last question for Mr. Jacobs. Are you aware of lay down yards such as this that are located in substantially similar locations, i.e. a couple hundred feet from openings of neighborhoods in communities, maybe not in Rowan County?
Yes.
With that, I don't have any further questions in response to yaws of Mr. Jacobs. Hopefully, that's been helpful. If there's no other questions for Mr. Jacobs or Mr. Akok, I will ask Mr. Kirkland to come up.
Sure, welcome. Yeah.
Thank you.
Approach with Mr. Kirkland's resume for the record and your benefit. As I do that to expedite this, I will ask Mr. Kirkland to state his name, business address, as well as his education post-high school.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals, 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina. I've got a degree from University of Chapel Hill, BA in English. I've been training through the Appraisal Institute and through this North Carolina school, looking at my appraisal license thing. I've been appraising as a state-certified general appraiser for 28 years. And I regularly do impact analysis, which is why I guess I'm here tonight. We do impact analysis. We've been focusing on that for about 15 years and do that regularly.
Mr. Kirkland, in your practice as an appraiser, you do two types of work. You determine an opinion of value, correct?
Correct.
And you do what you just called as an impact analysis, which is to look at the potential impact of one property or the use of one property on another, correct?
Correct.
Can you describe the, well, let me stop there. Mr. Chairman, I think that probably tenders him well enough as an expert. We would ask that he be entered as an expert appraiser in real property value, or in real property impact analysis. With that, Mr. Kirkland, I will turn it over to you.
And I guess I should have mentioned, I also have an MAI through the Appraisal Institute, so, which is the highest designation they put out. But as far as preparing for this, I have reviewed the site plan, looked over the application, looked at the site, visited the site. And looked at the site, visited the site, and again, tried to look for similar uses around housing like this. The best example that I would talk about is, well, I guess before that, just talking in general, this being a temporary use, we've appraised temporary uses regularly as part of our practice. And temporary uses, generally, we, when we look at those, more often than not, it's gonna be part of a parcel. And we've never found any impacts that extended not only from part of that parcel to other parts of the same tax parcel. We've certainly never seen any impacts that extended off of that parcel onto adjoining property uses. As far as why that would be is, again, they're temporary by nature. Temporary uses are happening around you all the way. We've got construction that happens, new subdivisions going in, new road projects going in. These happen all around homes all the time, and again, that's just part of being part of a growing society. The market perceives that and sees that, and we're not finding any impacts on that. We referenced Dr. Randall Bell, he's a MAI and a PhD, he literally wrote the textbook on appraising real estate damages. He, he looks at sort of a, a breakdown of detrimental conditions. He calls temporary uses a class four detrimental condition, any kind of temporary impact. And that would include things such as going, even a property going through bankruptcy, or going through a foreclosure, or a number of other things. These are temporary in nature and don't have impacts that are extending beyond a period of time. These are often considered to be benign detrimental conditions because there isn't a measurable impact. If you find, you can say that it's a detrimental condition to be going through these situations, but the market is not perceiving that. If this is the home that you found that you like, you can see that there's a temporary use next to it, it's not impacting property values. I would specifically cite that, looking for projects that were similar to this, we looked at a project called Soil Supply. It's outdoor storage, it's got active equipment, moving dirt, mulch, things like that, all around it. You might have a picture of that, is that available or no? Okay, it is not. But yeah, that is off Hagerstown Road, Huntersville, and we've got a subdivision, Country Club, that was built right next to it. The Country Club was built after the Soil Supply had been in business for years. They have homes that are right up against it, as close as 135 feet, if you measure off of the home to the distance, but there are property lines just like 50 feet to the back of the property lot. These homes are selling for $500,000 and $600,000 in 2018, 2019, which would have been before the run-up in 2021, 2022. Again, that is a permanent use that is very similar to this one, and is showing no impact on property values. We looked at those homes that were backing up to it and compared them to other homes in that same Country Club subdivision, and found no impact from that outdoor storage use. So based on that, we're, we're seeing for a temporary use such as this, we would not really anticipate any damage whatsoever.
So you're, I'm not an expert on real estate, so I'm not trying to trick you or anything, I'm just curious. So during that two-year period, if someone back here wants to sell their house, it's not gonna, people are gonna like, oh, there's a bunch of construction going on, I don't really wanna buy this house back here, it's not gonna have any effect at all on the values of their property, they're gonna get less money, or what they would if there wasn't all this construction around them?
We're, we're not seeing that, and that's what I'm saying. And a good example of this would be, again, it's a little out, out of your area here, but it's this, my, my area in Wake County, looking at where they're constructing a new elementary school on Hilltop Needmore Road. It's a two-year projected, two-to-three-year projected period of construction, and it's actually being built on a former golf course. So there's a lot of homes that actually are overlooking this construction site for that time period, though, because they were originally backing up to a golf course from the greens. Those homes are selling, the homes that are backing up to that, looking over this construction site, looked at a sale on 4608 Grammer Road. Again, it backs up to it, overlooks the construction site, sold in 2022. Construction on that school started in 2022 and is not expected to be complete until 2025. It actually sold at a premium for a similar house that is in that same subdivision but does not overlook that site. So again, we're, we're not seeing sales data that shows that because of the temporary nature of it.
So, I'm not trying to be confrontational, but I mean, is it, is it fair to compare Wake County to Rowan County? Because Wake County's just, you have something for sale, somebody's gonna pay you twice what you want for it. I mean, Mecklenburg, Wake, you know, these places are, you know, we're probably not in that area of same, you know, sell stuff as like, like they do. So I mean, is it, do you have something comparable to Rowan County?
Point to the Soil Supply that was over in Huntersville.
Well, that's in Mecklenburg County.
Again, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
I don't believe that there's anything that suggests that a buyer in this county has substantially different motivations than a buyer and a homeowner in other counties and other areas in North Carolina. We do impact analysis all over the state, and again, buyers typically are motivated the same, in very similar ways, not the same, but very similar ways, regardless of where they're located.
All right, any other questions for our expert? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we would close out this portion of our, of our presentation. We would ask for the opportunity to come back in rebuttal after the public hearing if there are continued and open questions.
Can you say something? I will, are you finished? Okay. I thought it might be a good time before we start to hear from those in opposition to kind of also make a distinction between the prior legislative hearing and this quasi-judicial, just to remind the board. In a quasi-judicial proceeding like this one, when the applicant, if you believe that they've met their burden of showing evidence, competent material and substantial evidence, that they've met their burden, then they're entitled to the permit, but the burden shifts to the opponent's to present competent material and substantial evidence likewise to rebut what the applicant has said. And so as we go into hearing the other people, I think that context is relevant in this case as opposed to the other one where you have some generalized concerns, we've expressed a couple up here already, as opposed to competent material and substantial evidence to create a fact. And so I just want to remind the board that this is different from the legislative hearing before, where you could sort of make any decision you want. This does have some structure to it as you move into the next phase and what you want to hear from anybody in opposition. So I just wanted to give you that as a reminder, since we just came out of a different hearing in the same area, and we're just in a different procedure in this one.
Having said that, I'll use the gavel of the chairman to say, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Is that okay with everyone? Yeah, we, we need to do that, so we can get our head on straight here. So it is currently 8:57, we will be back here at 9:02. So we're, we're taking five minutes and that's it. Okay. Sorry about that, we went long. All right, we're gonna open the floor for public comment, and we're gonna begin. We're gonna begin with Tyler again. We got here at 3 o'clock, so. So you signed up, signed up first. All right, let, let me say, we don't wanna cut you guys short. We, we wanna hear from everyone that wants to speak for or against, or, or share their opinion. But we've, we may not be out of here till midnight or later, and we got folks that have other, so again, I don't wanna minimize your issue, but if we could make it as succinct and, and short as possible, we would surely appreciate that. So again, yeah, and, and I think there's some folks that wanted to speak that we had already pulled, pulled this, so if, if you are so inclined, I'll give you an opportunity at the end to come up, so. Yeah, that's a good idea, Mike. He's our idea guy. Teresa's next, Teresa's safe for it, and then Chad, you get the mileage trophy for furthest, furthest travel, yeah. So we're gonna have Teresa, so we're gonna keep a couple in the dugout here, or in the batting, not the dugout, in the batter's box. So Teresa, if you would come up, and then we'll have, after Teresa, Don Richmond would be next, so.
It's called the on-deck circle.
On-deck circle, that's right. All right, go.
Thank you, and I, I'm gonna be as brief as I can, I do have a lot to say, I've got some prepared remarks, just a lot that I think is important to get, to get out there. I've, I've got a picture myself here, it's a little bit different. Guys, if anybody would like me. There's a lot in there, it's, just the first page is kind of the most important, the, the back is all just reference material that kind of backs up some of the things I'm gonna say, so don't think you gotta, you know, read through all this. But again, good evening, my name is Tyler Weathorne, I live on Kettner Farm Road, and as I said before, I'm a professional land surveyor. I work in the county with my own small business, however, prior to that, and I think this is important, I spent four years with a nationwide survey company where I managed land survey for oil and gas pipeline construction, including many projects very similar to what's in front of you today. All told, I've supported or managed land survey for more than 500 miles of pipeline, including locating many laydown yards. I say this to make the point that I'm not testifying today just as an impacted homeowner, I have actual experience and knowledge in projects just like this. So when I say that Dominion's plan here is dangerous and is going to upend the lives of many people, I'm not just saying it because I am one of those people, I'm saying it because from my viewpoint, this project actually is that bad, and Dominion can't prove otherwise. My brief testimony today will hit three points. First, the ordinance requires Dominion prove two criteria, I wanna look at them. Second, what does proof look like? And finally, I'll dive into what Dominion says in their own words, kind of break it down. Looking at the ordinance from Section 21-281, criteria A, Dominion must prove the proposed pipeline yard will not endanger the public health, safety, and welfare. There's no qualifier here, there's no acceptable level of risk. The ordinance asks a yes or no question, does the project endanger the public or does it not? Dominion must prove the answer is no, there will be no risk to public safety, or they failed this criteria. Also, as you consider Dominion's claims on public safety, I ask that you look at this room. This is the public the ordinance protects, not some faceless group. It's myself, my children, the handful of residents, the people in front of you. Section 21-281, criteria B, Dominion must prove that the laydown yard will not have a substantial negative impact on the adjoining properties. Well, if you're wondering what substantial negative impact looks like, I would say let common sense rule. To me, it looks like the regular day-to-day activities of life made more difficult, having to think about and plan around this yard each and every time I leave the house. It might also look like a hidden property values. As you consider your measure of substantial negative impacts, I say, look at the facts in front of you, and you'll know it when you see it. I wanna note that I haven't said anything about the importance of the pipeline or who it benefits, that's because that's not what we're here to discuss, that is not part of the, the criteria for approval of a temporary use permit. Now, the goalpost established, what has Dominion provided us in their application to prove their project meets these two requirements? Now, I'll admit, some of this was written prior to some of this testimony, but I still think most of this is still on, on the button. They've given us in their application a four-page developer's narrative, four pages of what I believe are disjointed claims and promises, and devoid, or nearly devoid of any actual substance. There's no reports, there's no studies, there's no analysis, there's no documentation to support most or all of the claims. They tell us, don't worry, it's all gonna be okay. Unsubstantiated claims and non-committal promises are not proof, but you and Dominion already know that. You both know what's required to meet the burden of proof because you've both seen it before. Case in point, January of 2022, Verizon Wireless came to this board to get a permit for a cell phone tower on Reimer Road. Verizon gave you 100 pages of reports proving the tower would be safe, and a 40-page real estate study that proved property values would not be affected. Their burden was met, the permit was granted. You'll find the title page and the table of contents of that report in your packet there. How does Dominion know what proof looks like? Well, in Buncombe County, coincidentally, also in January 22, Dominion applied for a pipeline right-of-way permit. In that case, they provided a 200-page environmental assessment, assessment, proving to the National Park Service there was no significant negative impact to the environment. Their burden was met, that permit was granted. Now that we know what the bar for proof has looked like before, let's dive into what Dominion gave you in their application. Now, I'm taking their words here from the narrative, quoting now, utilizing a laydown yard is standard protocol for projects of this nature. I agree with that, a laydown yard is standard in pipeline construction, but standard procedure doesn't also mean it's perfectly safe and won't be a nuisance, nuisance. Nor does it mean you should just rubber stamp this as routine and normal. Look at Augusta County, Virginia, where in 2018, Dominion's applications for laydown yards were denied not once, but twice for failing to prove the yard was not a dangerous nuisance. The documents for that are in your packet as well. Now, while the use of a laydown yard is typical, Dominion selected for this, Dominion's selected location for this yard, to me, does not seem typical at all. In my experience, I never saw a laydown yard designed to straddle both sides of a residential street. Per their site plan, Kettner Farm Road is the only access to both east and west areas of the yard. Think about this, Dominion, Dominion has designed this industrial site with all of its known hazards to fully surround a now quiet residential road to make that road part of their compound. The site plan shows driveways crisscrossing Kettner Farm Road, trucks, heavy equipment, machinery, and pedestrians will cross back and forth. Dominion isn't asking Kettner Farm residents to drive past their laydown yard, they want us to drive right through the middle every single time we leave our homes. Dominion is silent on the hazards from these inner yard cross-traffic, but they do offer a more general traffic safety plan, which testimony just expanded on. But quoting from the narrative, "Flagmen will be utilized to manage the road during, quote, 'peak traffic' and, quote, 'high truck volume.'" I could spend a lot of time just talking on the inconvenience that these flaggers pose, we've all been caught behind one, you know, once a month is too often, much less every single day. But beyond that, just in acknowledging the need for flaggers, Dominion admits their yard will create traffic conditions so hazardous that flaggers are necessary. It's a step in the right direction, but then they add a condition, only during peak traffic and high truck volume. Are you, or is this body going to delegate Dominion the authority to determine on their own when they want to protect the public? It's their traffic, it's their flagmen, it's their dollars paying for it, I don't think that system can be entrusted to protect us. Dominion admits the dangers, but then puts in an opt-out to their own solution and claims this is proof that we'll be safe. Dominion also tells us there will be 250 cars and up to 20 trucks in and out, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., six days a week. By a conservative estimate, that is a 1,000% increase of the normal daily traffic on Kettner Farm, and all of it concentrated to two narrow windows. What does 250 cars even look like? I ask you to look at your exhibit. End to end, it would be a convoy, convoy over a mile long, longer than the entirety of Kettner Farm Road. If only half of those cars come from I-85 each morning, the traffic stacking up to make a left onto Kettner Farm, an unprotected left, would back up past Boston Elementary, where it's gonna get tangled up with school buses, teachers, and parents dropping off their kids. Whichever direction they come from, 250 cars arriving or departing Kettner Farm Road at the same time each day will be felt everywhere. That's just the morning, what about the end of the workday? Well, now, I think it gets extremely ugly for the residents of Kettner Farm. Those of us who live behind this facility will be trapped behind a quarter-mile line, long line of cars stacked up at the stop sign. There is no other way out, there is no way around this bottleneck. Our day-to-day life, taking my kids to swim lessons, picking up meds at the pharmacy, going to church, each and every time at this period, we will sit and wait in this line, at least 60 cars deep. And this is nearly every day for two years, at least two years. Significant negative impact, when I said you'll know it when you see it, this is what I'm talking about. Dominion gives nothing, no proof that they can safely mitigate these impacts. I haven't even touched the scariest traffic concern, there is a Rowan County school bus stop at the intersection of Kettner Farm Road and Old Beatty Ford, the epicenter of all this traffic. My own first grader and the other kids on Kettner Farm, they ride this bus. The dangers are so obvious, yet I don't know that in their, or I'm certain in their narrative that they don't even recognize it. I don't know how they can prove they're protecting us when they don't clearly assess all the risks, especially to our children. My last point, water and storm runoff, there's a sheet in the, the second page of the exhibit. Dominion claims, quote, "No streams or associated wetlands will permanently be impacted by this laydown yard. Both the east and west yard drain into washes that dump into Dutch Buffalo Creek. The entire area is in the watershed of Dutch Buffalo, an area Rowan County planning designates as sensitive and requires protections." Dominion's narrative implies that we can expect polluted or contaminated water, and that chemicals are used on the site. Then they offer no plan for the management or disposal of this contamination, or what exposure to it might do to public health. Contamination and chemicals and all that runoff heading towards Dutch Buffalo, and Dominion claims no permanent impacts to public health. Is there, where is the proof, the documents that support that? This wraps up my testimony. Section 21-281, prove public health, safety, and welfare is not endangered. Prove no significant negative impact- Prove no significant negative impacts to neighbors. Dominion has come nowhere close to meeting that burden. And with the risks and hazards I and the others are gonna testify to, I don't believe they ever could prove it. This temporary use permit should be denied, not tabled, not continued, denied. Put a stop to a project that is rotten to its core and let the people here get back to our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is, uh... All right, I'm gonna ask you not to clap. Um, just takes time, and, um, so I appreciate y'all doing that, that's, but, um... Anyway, the next person is Teresa Safrat.
There she is.
There, and there she is. Uh, on, on deck then would be Scarlett Fleming. So Scarlett wants to come up. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Safrat, and I live at 575 Kettner Farm Road. 1942, I was born down the road in the last house, and it happened to be an 1844 original house. So I think I claim Kettner Farm Road maybe more than anybody else in the road. That being counted, my husband and I retired 2002. He's not retired yet, but we tried. At 2002, and we moved back on Kettner Farm Road, and we love it. It's just, i- i- it's just great. But here's the thing. I'm a grandmother, I'm a great-grandmother, I'm a mother. And what I'm concerned about, there's precedent on Kettner Farm Road for emergencies. We had the house at the end that I was born in that caught on fire. The fire people came. We had no body bothering us. We had a man, my stepfather, that died in a tractor accident, and we needed big equipment that came back. There was no construction, I mean, we were able to get access. We've had, uh, heart attacks and everything back that. We've had no problem. But with all of this heavy duty and flagmans and all that, I'm concerned, and four people on our road are over 80. And I think that we all know that over 80, there's a possibility that we might have a heart attack or some kind of medical emergency. If there, the medical and the fire and the emergency personnel cannot get back that road, and it's still a no access on that way, and we would not be able to get the kind of care that we needed. And that's all I'm asking you is to consider this, and I appreciate your listening to my concerns. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is, uh, Don Richmond, Scarlett's, uh, on deck, and then Hannah would be next. All right, she's here. All right, go ahead.
Thank you.
Back, back to speak, back to speak again, are you?
I'm back again.
Okay.
I'm getting better at this.
All right.
So, my name's Don Richmond, I live at 365 Kettner Farm Road. I also own the, the property of 545 Kettner Farm Road. So just like you mentioned there a minute ago, you know, I'm, I'm not a public speaker. Nothing terrifies me anymore than public speaking, except for the possibility of this being passed. And that is why I'm up here, making myself do this. So, so not only for myself and the residents that live on Kettner Farm Road, but also for every person traveling Old Beatty Ford Road. The end of Kettner Farm Road and Old Beatty Ford serves as a bus stop for my neighbor's eight-year-old grandson. Any additional traffic turning onto Kettner Farm Road greatly increases the risk of something happening, especially with the amount of traffic that Dominion is alluding to, not to mention the added risk of an accident happening for the residents coming in and out of Kettner Farm. My property joins the pro- proposed east lay down yard where 225 employee parking would be, along with an aggregate stockpile, construction waste area, and a sediment basin. Let's just start with what a huge impact all of this will have on my day-to-day living and way of life. Can you imagine 225 corridors slamming shut? Radios playing, loud exhausts and motors, and everyone talking? Not to mention the dump trucks that would be dumping the aggregate, which is very loud when that, when the tailgate slams shut. And the same goes for the construction waste. Then you have the equipment that you're loading the trucks with that you'd be listening to as well. Dominion states that they do not anticipate loud noises to be heard by the local landowners. And I say that they, they absolutely know that, that this is not true. I am in construction as well, and I'm around commercial vehicles and heavy equipment every day, and I know what noises would be coming. As far as using the pull-forward method as much as possible to minimize the noise, that may look good on paper, but the reality of this is a joke. Every load brought and dumped will involve backing by the trucks, as well as every bucket loaded by the loader would involve backing. There's not many pieces of equipment and/or trucks that I haven't operated myself, including, but not limited to, loaders, excavators, dump trucks, tractor trailers, and concrete trucks. Dominion says that if noises, noise does become a problem, then they would construct a solid fence as a barrier. My question on that is this. Who would be the judge as to what is too noisy? Dominion, they've already stated that they would comply with the Rowan County Code, so I can already tell you that the noise is okay. Let's talk about the dirt and the dust pollution that is guaranteed that I will have to contend with daily. You absolutely cannot dig, load, or dump aggregate, dirt, or construction waste without it being a factor. Everything in and around my home will be covered. I've spent a substantial amount of money screening in my back patio, which is at the closest point to the boundary line, just mere feet away from the proposed construction waste and aggregate stockpile would be. It would be virtually impossible to keep anything remotely clean, let alone be able to sit there and enjoy morning coffee or do any outside activities such as grilling or simply watching TV. Now, let's talk about the waste dump site for a moment. Did they have proposed a worse location? I think not. My well sits right there at the end of my home. If they are dumping the liquefied soil that has come from all over, dumping it so close to my well, where do you think that dirty water is gonna go? I can tell you where there's a very good chance it's gonna go, and that's in my well. Furthermore, there's already water that drains from that property on the mine. When I bought my home in July of 2015, the previous homeowners had a ditch dug alongside the driveway, and the first time it rained, I saw why that was. It's because there's so much water that comes from that property on the mine, they were trying to keep it from getting on the sidewalk in the driveway. I since have paid to have it dug up, aggregate put down, along with it drained to the road. Most everything now close to my well either goes into the ground or is carried out to the road. There is still one place closer to the road where every time it rains, water runs across my driveway from that property. I have pictures that I brought with me, if anybody cares to see those. I would also like to talk about the property value or lack thereof. Now, I heard what, what the professional said here. I think he's incorrect. If that proposed site is allowed to go through, my property value is gonna take a massive hit, no doubt. I have worked very hard and spent a lot of money to increase the value of my home, and this proposed site will most definitely diminish the current market value. I don't think it's right for anyone, Dominion, Dynamic Developers, or anyone, to prosper at the expense of someone else. And I'm talking about the expense of personal safety and monetarily. On the sediment basin and the concerns that I've got with that, but I do have them. However, I am trying to be mindful of everyone's time. There's one more thing I'd like to mention, though. It is my opinion that Dynamic Developers should be not only embarrassed, but ashamed of themselves for not telling the nice couple that just bought the home at 220 Kettner Farm Road their full intentions of the property before selling them the house. I'm sure that there must be a more suitable place for the home from homes that Dominion would be able to go. There's a saying that I hear quite often, and I feel like it's appropriate for this. It's not about who is right, it's about what is right. I was brought up as a child being told that right will prevail over wrong and that good will prevail over bad. I see nothing right or good about this proposed site, and I hope the panel will agree and do what's right for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. All right, uh, Scarlett is up next, then Hannah Cedric Fleming, you'll come forward as well. Cedric.
Thank you.
Yep.
I present the image just to let you know where our church lies in relation to this property. This is taken from Kettner Farm Road in the direction of our church. And I am speaking today, um, as the council president of the Congregation of Ebenezer Lutheran Church, located at the corner of Old Concord and Old Beatty Ford Roads at 4914 Old Beatty Ford Road, Rockwell, North Carolina. Our congregational council has reviewed the plans for a lay yard that lies directly adjacent across the road from our house of worship. The only separation is Old Concord Road. We pride ourselves on being in tune with our community and supportive of its members, and our congregation is growing. Any potential industrial, commercial use of the property would be counter to our mission as a sanctuary of peace and tranquility. In addition to our status as a place of worship, we are also an outreach ministry to our community. Increased traffic and noise will negatively impact our ability to provide outreach to our neighbors, not to mention the detriments to facilities and church activities. Our number one concern is noise, specifically the backing, parking, and dumping of material and construction equipment and machinery, as well as noise from the proposed pipe welding and bending that would, would occur at the site closest to the church property. Our cemetery is directly adjacent, with graves mere feet from the proposed site. Our graveyard, by nature, is designed specifically as a place of serenity at all times, especially during funerals and ongoing for grieving families. The backup beeping of 25 semi-trucks per day, dumping of soil, clanging pipes, buzzing of welding, as well as acceleration, engine braking, and air brakes popping from these heavy trucks moving downhill in both directions away from the site would prove distracting at a minimum and distressing for those seeking solitude and comfort. Due to the sacred nature of our place of worship, we require a peaceful environment for worship, especially, but also for devotional time and Bible study. Noise endangers our opportunity to maintain a sacred space for our community. While the proposal maps show buffer wooded areas between the properties, please note the photos presented earlier that show those buffer areas are no longer exist due to clearcutting that extended to the proposed site boundaries. You can reference, um, slide five that Dominion produced to see that that area has been completely cleared. There is no viable buffer vegetation standing on the proposed site. Our second major concern is traffic. The reported 250 cars and 20 trucks arriving and departing during the proposed hours of 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, will create a large traffic load at prime times of church activities. This is direct conflict with 6:30 PM scout meetings, 6:00 PM committee meetings, 7:00 PM council meetings, and Bible studies at various times in the evening. All these activities are year-round. Various religious seasons throughout the year increase evening activities at Ebenezer as well, including Lent, beginning with Shrove Tuesday, and weekly Wednesday night services, Holy Week services, including Mardi-Thursday, Good Friday, and our annual evening Easter pageant, and also our Live Nativity, to name a few. All of these activities begin and or end between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. In addition, we host many Saturday events, including a fall festival, family nights, weddings, men's groups, youth, and scout events throughout the year. This interact, intersection is already notoriously dangerous. Pedestrian traffic crosses the road at this location. Walkers use our property and all of the roads rating out from the area. The proposed volume of traffic would increase risk to pedestrians and those driving to and from our church. Please also take into consideration that Boston Elementary School, located at 4245 Old Beatty Ford Road, less than one-half mile up Old Beatty Ford Road from the proposed site, convenes at 7:30 AM each morning, which causes traffic to back up between 7:00 AM and 7:30 AM. And lastly, our concern with the impact of vibrations from heavy truck and construction machinery movement and dumping of materials. Our church has nearly century-old, irreplaceable stained glass windows that would suffer from increased vibrations. Therefore, Ebenezer Lutheran Church, as an established place of worship in this community, with a 157-year history, including the church council and congregation, hereby submits an official declaration of opposition to proposed construction projects and any changes that threaten our ability to serve our community. The church greatly, greatly appreciates your time and consideration of our interests regarding this matter. Thank you, and this is signed and endorsed unanimously by our minister, Lucas Safrat, and the entire Ebenezer Lutheran Church Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, Hannah's next, Cedric on deck, and, uh, Robert Query would be after that.
So I, Hannah Weathorne, live on Kettner Farm. Um, I really just want to focus on this idea of what is burden of proof. So you don't have an environmental study, you don't have a real estate study. It's almost impossible to find lay down yards, um, on the MLS because of how they are coordinated. Um, so our family realtor was unable to find any to actually get any data out of Rowan County or Cabarrus or Mecklenburg. Um, we did try. Um, we have ordinances in Rowan County to protect our citizens, to protect our quality of life. We have a noise ordinance, 241, that sets the decibel levels to 70 between the hours of 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM. A diesel truck runs at, runs at 90 decibels. That hits already over what's classified as, uh, realistic for during the day. A grater is at 85. So think about equipment starting before 7:00 AM. At 6:00 AM, my daughter gets on the bus at 6:50. Um, and I know we're really harping on the bus stop, but it's 20 degrees outside. I'm not letting my first grader get out and stand on the side of the road. I'm gonna park my car in the middle of Kettner Farm, as I have been entitled to do, and I'm gonna wait until the bus comes, whether or not there's a flagger or not. Because that's what I'm entitled to do as my, as a parent and what's in the best interest of my child. So it's not just that I'm gonna have this separate area, there's no pull-off land, there's nowhere for me to go. I'm gonna sit there and I'm gonna wait until she safely boards the bus. And then I'm gonna turn my car around with a three-point turn, and I'm gonna go back down my road. Because what else am I gonna do? Turn back out onto Old Beatty Ford, turn left, turn right into the drive-through store, turn around in the drive-through store, turn left on Old Beatty, and turn right on Kettner Farm, all because we have flaggers and a construction zone living in our, living, working on our street? We are not crossing through a construction zone, we are living in it. So we are going through it every single day. Every single time I, I go to work, I come home from work, I go to the grocery store. We also have an, an ordinance in Rowan County that dictates fumes and what that, fumes and dust, and what it says is, you can't create a nuisance. I'm not sure, because I haven't visited many lay down yards, but I would assume that the dust created when, as, as Richmond said, when aggregate is dumped, is probably considered a nuisance if your property line is 100 foot feet from where it's being dumped. We also have a vibration ordinance, 243, which says you cannot have a detectable vibration at a property line. That's not 100 feet from where it's working, it's not 500 feet from where it's working, it's at the property line. So you're telling me that bulldozers, dump trucks, heavy machinery, semi-trucks who are crossing, who are literally pulling in front of Jean's house and by Richmond's house, are not creating a vibration at the property line? Because there is not an adequate buffer between those property lines and where, um, those machineries, where that machinery is working. I'm gonna end, but I just want, I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions that weren't answered in the four pages. Kettner Farm has, has been in the same family for, since the 1700s, 1800s. I know on our property, we have Native American artifacts. We have artifacts of the generations that came before us. We don't have an archaeological study, which is typically done in these, in these, um, instances, to show that there is or there isn't harm in destroying this land. We don't have an environmental study that shows us how the water is going to move or if it's gonna pick stuff up and carry it. We don't have a watershed study. It bypasses the 12% impervious set of Dutch Creek because it's a temporary permit. Um, so my point to you would be, I don't think they've met their burden of proof. If they, if they've answered all of your questions about this property, then sure, maybe. But if you have questions about how they're gonna run and how they're gonna operate and how they're gonna keep the, what was it, the benign detrimental condition and of the people who live on Kettner Farm, then I think you have to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric is now, and Robert is, uh, next. Cedric is now, and Robert is next, and then Wayne Miller after that.
Hi, Ced. Hey there. Cedric Fleming, 10525 Old Concord Road. I'm actually downstream from where we're talking. On the, if you still have the pictures that Scarlett gave you out in the last time, there's five in particular I'd like to take a look at. The first thing that Dominion has to do is prove that it's not going to affect us and it is safe. My concern is going to be the water, the runoff. I know everybody's talked about it, but if you look at picture two on here, and you look out over that field, you see water on the left hand side with some buildup back there. There's also roofs below that. So, we do have a downgrade from this top. Their location they're looking at is actually above a lot of houses, okay, with the runoff you've got. The other thing is three. If you look at picture three, you'll see where they have cleared off a field. Now, I love the pictures that Dominion and everybody's provided that shows all of that forestry there. That's gone. Now, the beautiful thing, I guess, would be that Dominion doesn't have to put that forest back. They said that they have to put the land the way it was. I hope this is not what they meant, okay? Because this looks bad, and that runoff is now coming past our house. If you take a look at eight and nine, you will see the effect of not having vegetation to slow that down. Their requirement is a silt fence, that's it. Looking at Dominion's topographical map, and you look at their runoff pond that they have, I can't remember off the top of my head where their fuel storage is, but they have fuel storage there as well. But the runoff pond is at an elevation that is very, very steep. I'm not going to go look and, you know, get my projector out for tractor, but that is a very close location. A lot of the times, they do have that clause that, you know, well, what I'm bringing to you is the exception to a normal sunny day that was presented in all of the pictures that you've seen of a lay down, okay? This is what happens when we get rain up there. The very last picture, if you take a look at that one, number 10, number 10 is almost an exact copy of number nine. You're talking about a six to eight foot raise in water when we have the rain that we just had. I do not think a silt fence will protect the community that's downstream from this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Next is Robert Query, Wayne Miller, and then...
Commissioners, I did not really plan on speaking, but I wrote my concerns down in the form of a letter, and I've made copies for each of you. I'm just going to kind of read over this. My name's Robert Query, and I'm the owner of the piece of land that joins the proposed site. My piece of land just lies just to the north, and this is on the west side of Kettner Farm Road. This is the side of the road that they're planning to build this containment pond on, and is approximately, I've heard it's about 100 feet from my horse pastures. And I have three horses on my property, and I'm concerned that these, this pond is going to stagnate and cause a mosquito problem, and mosquitoes are known to carry several different kinds of viruses. One of them is deadly to horses, called eastern equine encephalitis. My main concern is the safety of my grandsons. I have two grandsons, ages six and eight. The eight year old lives with me full time. He catches the school bus at the end of Kettner Farm Road, and my wife or myself take him to the bus stop each morning, but he walks home in the afternoon, not because he has to, he just wants to. So, unless it's raining, we just let him walk home. It's about a quarter of a mile. He likes to watch these, the house construction that's going on at the end of the road. And him and my six year old grandson, they like to play out there on the road, riding bicycles. Right now, they play in this field, where this proposed site is. Right now, it's just a wide open field, but whenever they find out they've got a containment pond to play in and tractors to play on, they're going to have a heyday. You know how, look, boys are going to be boys. Another concern I have is the dust problem and the odor problem. My home is downhill all the way to my home from the beginning of Kettner Farm Road, and the wind and the air usually blow down the hill. That's just nature's way. And if you believe that there's not going to be any odor from this place, don't buy one word of it. I worked for Duke Energy back in my younger days. I've helped construct some of these containment ponds, and the mat that is placed in the bottom of them does protect against contaminating the groundwater, but it doesn't do anything for the surface water. If this pond happens to overflow, it's going to come right down across my property. And another concern that I have is the rainwater runoff. There are two drainage ditches out there now. One of them goes between my property and the property of this proposed site. The other drainage ditch goes down the side of Kettner Farm Road. And the place where these two drainage ditches meet on a real, real heavy rainy day like we had last Tuesday, it turns into a river. All this water flows down across my pastures and my fields. I just strongly urge you to deny this from right. I've got a copy of this for each of you.
Thank you, Mr. Query. Let's see, Wayne Miller, Wayne, welcome.
Thank you. So, Wayne Miller, I live on Chalk Maple Road, which used to be Old Beatty Ford Road. It's at the corner of the Express Corner, so it's the opposite side of Fox Store, about a half mile down. And the concern that I'm bringing is the safety at Boston Elementary School. When I, when my sons attended Boston Elementary School in the second grade, and they're now in the seventh grade, when they attended Boston Elementary School, I helped out with morning carpool, and it became very apparent within the first month of me helping out that the in and out of Boston Elementary School along Old Beatty Ford was a challenge. And so, at the time I went and I spoke with Susan Cox of the school board, and with her efforts and the efforts of herself, as well as Ms. Sigmund, who was the principal at the time, we were able to get speed limit school zone signs installed through the school board. And that, to me, was enough just to come and say, hey, if we're going to add extra cars beyond the additional exit, the traffic that came from the exit of Exit 65 as well, it's just a concern that I'm afraid even with an SRO that they now have, that the likelihood of something happening or there being additional traffic and causing issues at Boston Elementary School is going to be increased. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rod, and then Gene and Lisa will be on deck. Gene and Lisa.
My property is adjacent to, it actually touches this yard here or this land here. I'm a single parent of two young children. For the past nine years, my 11 year old daughter Faith and nine year old son Joshua are both enrolled at Boston Elementary. For almost five years, I've committed my free time to volunteering at Boston Elementary. Actually took his job. I open car doors in the morning, I direct traffic in the afternoons before they got the SRO there. I do it, I do it on, every Friday, I volunteer tutor there. I work in the kitchen, you know, doing stuff, and I see the traffic there every day that I'm there, and every Friday that I have off of work, I volunteer there to open car rider doors in the mornings on Thursdays and Fridays, and then direct traffic sometimes in the afternoons. In 2016, my family purchased our Rowan County home at 10760 Old Concord Road. It's situated, like I said, adjacent to the property in question where Dominion Energy, their project number 21350021, plans to construct this lay down yard. I really appreciate us staying these late hours and addressing you guys tonight regarding our concerns. Man, I stand before you to express a strong opposition to the proposed project due to its proximity, being less than 400 feet from my family home. I urge you to vote against this, of course, for compelling reasons, including the pollution it causes. The pollution emanating from the yard's pipe storage, vehicle parking, and various pollutants, tractors, diesel trucks will impact our air quality. A pipe lay down yard has the potential to generate dust containing harmful contaminants. Some potential contaminants associated with such yards include particulate matter, metals, lead, mercury, cadmium, chromium, chemicals and hydrocarbons. Dust generated from handling pipes particularly used in the oil and gas industry may contain hydrocarbons and other chemical residues. The groundwater contamination, I know you've heard it several times from people, but I, my property is exactly down the hill from this. Every, every, all the water that runs off of this property runs through my yard. This last rain, I've got pictures here for you, I'd like to hand to you. I've got a 10 foot wide river running across the front of my yard and probably 10, six feet to eight feet wide, running across the back of my yard, and every bit of it comes from that property.
The owner of the property, the owner of the property cleared, you see, like they said, you see all these pictures here of all the forestry, it was beautiful, you know, but I'm assuming due to, I doubt it's this lay down yard, but they cleared most of the trees off of there, and ever since then, I've had continued, you know, continued wind. I can hear, I can hear, I can hear Boston, or excuse me, I can hear people on Betty's Farm or Old Betty's Ford Road driving, you know, from my house now that all the trees are gone, you know, but that's here nor there about this. According to 3M, the coatings on the pipes are known to degrade over time, especially under weather conditions like sunlight, wind, and exposure, rain, dew. The proposed gravel barrier is insufficient, I believe, to prevent seepage jeopardizing the water quality of our well, which is exactly on the property line where this, where this water runs through. The manufacturer's safety data that reveals that the 3M coatings contain chemicals linked to birth defects, cancer, and potential other health effects, contaminants that neither my family, my family nor I want in our well water, and I believe it's safe to assume that nobody in this room would want it in theirs. The attached, the attached pictures illustrate water from this property flowing directly from where the lay down yard and pipe storage would be across our property line into Dutch Buffalo Creek, which leads, which heads north northeast near Boston Heights, almost all the way to 152. There's, there's a lot of farms along that area, a lot of people with horses and cattle that, that creek gives the water to, and I think, I think it's going to be a negative impact on everybody all the way down to 152. The traffic congestion is going to be ridiculous, as I said. I travel that road every day, twice a day, sometimes multiple times, coming back and forth, taking my kids to school, going through there, going through there, and it's going to cause significant delays for us. Somebody else touched on it, emergency response delays, bus schedule disruptions. The lay down yard operates for an extended hours, as they said, 6 to 7:00 p.m. six days a week, that's 78 hours in a six day period. This requires a significant workforce and school bus schedules and car rider families in the area will certainly experience disruptions. This can impact the timely and safe transportation of all of our students and kids and their families. It's going to obviously have wear and tear on the road, which they've discussed. The presence of heavy duty trucks entering and exiting the lay down yard on a dead end road can pose safety concerns for all of them on Kettner Farm and anybody just traveling through Old Betty's Ford, not to mention the maintenance costs on the regular roads. They're talking about maintaining Kettner Farm, but what about, what about Old Concord? What about, what about Betty's Ford? Are they going to, are they going to, you know, continually keep that up as well? Anyway, the proposed lay down yard poses hazards for our children as due to increased traffic, bus stops, and school. While assurances have been given about flagmen on the site, the yard's operation, 13 hours a day, six days a week, with a proposed 250 employees, raises concerns about potential delays and interruptions and our kids' bus schedules. I just, I really, I really hope that you guys deny this and take a look at those pictures. That's a lot of water flowing across my property, and where does that water go? It goes into the, goes into the creek, but a lot of it seeps down into my well, and that's, and that's where my kids and I drink from, that's where we cook from, that's what we bathe in, and I don't, I don't want those contaminants in my well. When I, when I bought the house in 2016, I had Rowan County well, or Rowan Drilling, they did a, they did a bacteria test on my water to make sure that it was good, and he said in the 20 years that he'd been in business, it was some of the cleanest water he'd seen, in the top 10 of the cleanest water. After this lay down yard, I bet you, I bet you it's not going to be anywhere close to that. So, I appreciate you guys and thanks for spending a late hour with us and listening to us.
You're welcome. Thank you. Gene, and then Lisa.
My name is Jean Huistner. I live at 220 Kettner Farm Road. My husband Howie and I took title of our new home on December 7, 2023. During the purchase process, we were informed and provided a map showing that the land in section 13712 was plotted out with Rowan County to eventually have 12 homes built. We were told that these homes would likely not be built for the next few years. Prior to closing our, our home, our house, we were informed that the land next to, behind, and across from us was intended to be used as a construction lay down yard. That area would, would be used to base operations for construction, have construction office and trailers, have 250 employees, construction machinery, soil stockpiles, be a work area for pipe welding and bending, semi trucks coming in and out, as well as flagmen and direct traffic. Main entrance is going to be right across the street from me. We, we also learned that this would be going on six days a week for 13 hours a day. We understand that the intention is, is for this arrangement to not have a negative impact on the adjoining properties, but we are struggling to see how it would have, would not have a negative impact on us. According to the plans, we would be surrounded by all of this for at least two years. Had we known these plans, had, if we had been informed of the intersection of this intention to have a construction lay down yard surrounded, surrounding us for the next two to three years, we never would have purchased this home. It is clear that this was all planned months ago. We are struggling to understand why this information and these plans would not have been disclosed to a prospective buyer or the real estate agent so that we could have made an informed decision. When asked, we were told that the 10 acres across, the land across from us on the corner from us on the corner were going to be donated to Rowan County for a construction of new fires, station and a Dollar General store. That is all we were told. This, if this goes through, we will not be able to stay here. I will, we will not be comfortable in our own home. I am seventy-five years old. My hundred, husband is eighty-two. My husband is disabled and often needs a, he needs a wheelchair when we go off anywhere and he walks around the house with a walker. He has, he had two strokes two years ago and he has Parkinson's disease. Um, it, according to the Parkinson's website, whether it's a short term or long term, stress can negatively impact mental and physical health. People with Parkinson's and physical, uh, and physical health, people, I'm sorry, people with Parkinson's disease commonly report that ac- acute stress worsens their motor symptoms such as freezing of gait and, and hand tremors. People with, uh, Parkinson's also notice that chronic stress worsens non-motor symptoms, um, such as anxiety and depression. Studies have also shown that chronic stress can accelerate Parkinson, Parkinson's disease. If this goes three through, we will, besides the inconvenience of the presence of the construction efforts, my specific concerns is for my husband's health, living in the middle of a construction site. The construction dust can cause a wide range of health and lung problems, including cardiovascular and respiratory disease, as well as cancer. The construction noise can induce chronic stress, leading to various mental health problems such as anxiety, irritability and reduced concentration. Welding gases can reproduce ozone of carbon dioxide, uh, gases. It's also known to cause kidney cancer and lung cancer. Um, increased traffic on Kettner Farm Road will be intolerable. It is a small side road. This disruption adding two hundred and fifty cars, trucks and work equipment on this minor road for thirteen hours a day, six days a week for two to three years is an alarming and upsetting thought. I am concerned of seepage of contaminants into my well water from all the construction activity. How can I be assured that the water source will not be compromised by this activity? We currently experience a lot of water collection. This was my backyard. We current, currently experience a lot of water collection areas and minor flooding in the yard around my house when it rains. If there are several stockpiles of various soils and gravel around my home, I would expect the problem to get worse. We live in a quiet li, we live a quiet lifestyle. Moving from home to home is not easy for us. My husband needs a home that is handicapped accessible, which is not easily found. My home is an investment. With all this construction activity surrounding my house, the property in resale value will certainly decline, and they can't tell me it won't. I can't imagine someone looking to move into the area for two to three years from now, once the construction has completed. Can the company guarantee that the value of my home will be the same to, in, or rise due to this activity? We ask that this company not be permitted to proceed with using this area with, with their construction lay down yard and that the plan be reconsidered. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, next is Lisa, and then I think, um, raise your hand if you wanted to sign up but weren't able to. If anyone has any more to add.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa Burgess, and, uh, just please bear with me because I'm used to speaking to a much younger group, um, of four and five year olds every day. So, because I'm a teacher. So, just bear with me. Um, I'll try not to go into a phonics lesson or anything. But, um, you know, I echo-
You're not, you're not in sales, are you?
I echo everything that has been said, um, by all the people that have testified so far. Um, I am a very concerned, a community member. I have, um, been at, uh, one, um, six-six Crete Myrtle Lane slash one three eight. I don't know why it's such a big difference in the numbers, but one three eight, um, Crete Myrtle Lane is where I grew up. And then one six six is adjoining. Um, and that's where we, me and my husband built a house and my family resides there at this time. So, um, my concerns is, um, all the water. I wished I'd have took pictures last week, uh, last Tuesday when I walked over there in that treacherous weather. Um, but we have water, you know, my concern is the water, the water flow. Uh, we have water that flows in from all directions. We have creeks all around the house. We have lots of under, underground, um, springs. Oh, thank, oh, thank you. Um, so I have pictures actually that we can pass around. Thank you, neighbors. But anyway, I do have some pictures on my phone, but I just don't, did not print them. Sorry about that. But anyway, we'll pass this around as far as that you can see this again. Uh, that house that you're gonna see, that's the house that I grew up in. That's the one three eight, and then we're up on the hill from that. But, um, when I walked over in the woods, I just noticed water coming from the property line where they're thinking about putting that, um, proposed, um, catch basin three hundred feet off the one three eight Crete Myrtle, um, property line. Um, water just comes down. It seems like from up above Rod's, I don't know those neighbors up there, but like at the beginning of Kettner Farm Road, this is right in all of our backyard. All the woods were, most of the woods were cut down. All the trees that you, um, that we had evidence of showing, that's been cut down. Um, so, um, water seems like all across there, all the way down, that extends our property line at the one three eight address, the water just flows downward. It's like it's a slope all the way down. And so, any water, any leakage, anything, and I mean, you know, you've got to allow for human error. You know, they said, you know, another thing, and I don't want to jump around, but they said they would put drip pans under the vehicles. Um, human error. What if somebody gets busy and they forget they've put in a long day, six to seven, and they forget to put drip pans under their vehicles? I mean, that's gonna seep into the ground and over time, that's gonna affect us. I'm really concerned with this, um, I'm really concerned with this catch basin being three hundred feet off the property line. All of our wells in that vicinity, all of my neighbors' wells, our wells are on the backs of our houses out there. Um, like I said, we have creeks, underwater, um, springs. Um, it's just water coming in all different directions. Um, when I went over there last week, it was just, I mean, I've got pictures of new streams that was made from that storm. And then it all collects, it all goes down into that, um, the Buffalo Creek that, that, um, Scarlett Fleming was talking about. Um, we just went to a meeting last fall about our area being a flood plain. And I wish I had a picture of my son when he was like twelve years old. Uh, we had, uh, a tornado that came through. And right out there in that flood plain, um, near the Buffalo Creek, water was up to his hips. And he's twelve years old. So, when he was twelve, he was about my height. So, um, my concern is the water. I also grew up in Boston School. My children attended Boston School. I was raised, I went to Ebenezer Lutheran Church most of my life. So, I have, um, concerns with, with all that was said about the church and the school. The school is approximately nine hundred, uh, seven hundred ninety-seven yards from Kettner Farm Road to the first entrance of Boston School parking lot. So, um, I, you know, you can have flagmen. There's not much, there's not much leadway between when you pull out of Kettner Farm Road and you turn left by the drive through, the drive through's on that side, and you turn left to go down to the four way stop. Um, in the mornings and the afternoons, I can, I mean, I do, I commute to work every morning and I go down Moose Road. Uh, I hit, turn right to Betty Ford and then turn left into Moose. Um, I'm thinking about the buses. I'm thinking about the bus stop. I'm thinking about the school safety. I'm thinking about our wells. I'm thinking about our, um, the impact of our drinking water. I mean, we, we drink from our well, our animals drink from our well. How's this gonna affect, um, wildlife around there? Um, to me, this, this land is my heritage. I have my, I do not, no longer have my parents. Most of their relatives have passed away. Um, this land is our heritage that we're gonna pass on to our children. And I know one fella, um, spoke, one of these gentlemen, no disrespect intended, but one of these gentlemen said in his opinion, it's not a danger, um, to public safety. Well, that's his opinion. Um, there's a lot of opinions floating around here tonight and a lot of concerns. And, um, you know, another thing, all those trees, all those beautiful trees, last summer, um, you know, every five minutes, we heard a tree hit the ground over there. Every five minutes. It broke my heart. I walked over there. And like I said, this land is my heritage. And I walk over there and it may not mean much to somebody from, you know, Pennsylvania or a big company like Dominion. No disrespect, like I said, but, um, these trees, these good viable trees hitting the ground, well, every five minutes. Well, that's, that's affecting our air quality over there. So, with all this dust and pollution that's gonna be coming off of this work site, um, the wind's already picked up. We have a pool and we have, uh, sidewalks, you know, cement surrounding the pool. And like, we've noticed in the last several storms, um, that we've got horrendous amounts of leaves coming in, leaves coming in. That wind, there's no barriers over there past our little bitty wood line that we have right now because everything has been thinned out and put to the ground. So, we're getting all the dust. We're getting all the wind. Um, we're getting all of that because our natural barrier has been cut down. Um, let's see, uh, noise pollution, air pollution. Um, and you know, they say, they, you know, the experts said that they would be there two years. That's two years. What's it gonna do for our lifetime? And I'll close on that. And I thank you so much for hearing us tonight. And I will, um, I hope what I said made some sense. I know it was an echo to what a lot of others had said, but I'm, I'm mainly concerned for like the traffic safety. I'm concerned for, um, our wells, for our underwater springs. I'm concerned for our creeks that not only affect our houses and around our area, but feed into larger bodies of water. Um, you know, I'm concerned with our air quality. Um, we're exposed to enough chemicals as it is. And, and as Rod spoke, I've researched some about that. I just want to echo what he said about the, uh, the piping for this pipeline. Um, it is dangerous. And if it is left out over six months, the sunlight can damage it, uh, water damages it, lots of other thing damage, lots of other things damage it. Um, and underground, underground, you know, underground, the pipes can even receive damage underground. So, I don't know if that makes sense, but I'll pass these.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So, it's been a lot. Um, la- last chance, if there's any, if anyone has something different to say, I, if anything, if anyone has, I don't want to exclude anyone, but I, I think everyone's kind of heard, uh, the issues. All right, going once, going twice. All right, we'll close that. You're up, counselor.
Mr. Chairman, if we could ask for five minutes to look at the evidence that's been put in and provided to the clerk and presented to the board and to, uh, confirm what rebuttal that we may want to put into the record, I think that will make us be more expeditious. I can tell you that, um, well, for certain, what we would like to put into rebuttal, um, will be our expert related to, um, environmental measures and, or environmental studies and, uh, soil erosion control measures, um, to supplement the affidavit that's in record. But if we could take five minutes to look at the materials that's been provided to the board, um, uh, by those that have spoken to see if we need to address any other measures.
Sure. And I think if you, if we look at the agenda, maybe we can keep the agenda moving and take a break on this and come back to it.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Um, I, I feel bad for folks that are on the agenda. My friend Shane, uh, for one.
Shane's fine. Shane's fine.
Not, not.
Not Shane's stuff.
One of them have hair.
Neither one of them have hair, do they? Well, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna move.
We'll take care of other business and come back.
Let, let's.
That's what I would recommend.
Let's see if, um, Hey, to our, to our planning department, who is, uh, doing road name changes? All right. Are we expecting any controversy out of this? Do we have, um, everything else? Well, I've got three folks signed up to speak. Um, I've got, uh, Yarborough, Toby West and Dalton Moose. Would the, are three of you still here? Okay. And then, um, M. Yarborough. Who is M. Yarborough? M. Yarborough? All right. Dalton Moose? So, M. Yarborough, Toby, and Dalton Moose, none of them are here? All right, let's bring you up here then. Let's roll. While they're, you guys know what's going on here, right? Okay. This is, uh, no disrespect, but as quickly as you can do this.
I'm gonna do it as quickly as I can. I can get it come up. Have, like I said, do you want me to just present all three of them?
Yeah, that'd be great. Just give us the names and-
Gotcha. First one's gonna be Freshwater Lane. Um, this one is the only petition that was submitted to our office. So, it was signed by a hundred percent of the property owners that are gonna be affected. Um, freshwater lane is one of the names that they came up with, and that was approved.
Do we need to have public hearings on these? Open and close for, okay. Do we do them individually or all at once?
One time.
We can do them all at once. All right. What's the next one?
Next one proposed is off of Faith Road, twenty-six hundred block. There are three houses that access off of this driveway, um, which according to ordinance, said needs to be named. Reached out to the property owners, did not receive any feedback. Um, so therefore staff came up with the name, got it approved, and we're asking that we name that driveway overload, overflow trail. Um, finally, the last one, Gin Road. Um, little bit different. There's only two residences that are on this drive. However, when it was numbered, it is, they're actually numbered four hundred and they're in the five hundred block range. So, that was brought up as a, you know, a danger for nine-one-one purposes. Um, again, reached out to the property owners, received no feedback, no petitions. Um, so staff came up with the name Twist Lane, and that was approved by nine-one-one. So, those are the three names that we're asking for today. I'm sorry? For Faith Road? You want a Faith Road?
All right. I will open the floor to a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on these? We'd love to hear from you. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have three road name changes. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve all three changes.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are our friends back yet? Nope. Uh, hmm. Could we squeeze Sunset Point in here? Shane? Evidently spaghetti's on the table.
Shane, uh, also agrees.
Well, yeah. Shane squared.
Here we go.
This is item G.
Legislative hearing here for rezoning. Sunset Point HOA is the owner. The property's outlined in yellow. It's currently zone CBI CD from a two thousand five, two thousand six decision for a commercial project that didn't materialize. Look at the site here in twenty-two. There's nothing on the site. And the requested zoning would go back to RA, what it was previously. They have a boat ramp on the site now, and it would also be an amendment to the planned development subdivision for Sunset Point for four lots in the future. Single families subject to their covenants meets the land use plan. Folks receive notice. Nobody called, or were a few that showed up at the planning board meeting, but I don't think anybody was concerned about it. Planning board recommended approval with these two items here for your consideration.
All right, leave that up. Public hearing? All right. We'll open the floor to public hearing. Anyone? Close the floor. And, uh, I'll offer up this- I'll offer up this statement of consistency. Z one three dash two three is consistent. Did you want to speak, Shane?
I need to.
So, so this was changed to a commercial to try to maybe do restaurants and stuff. Didn't work out. Now it's going back to residential. Isn't that the gist? Got, got you. And everyone in his neighborhood supports this. Uh, Z, uh, one three dash two three is consistent with the East Rowan Lane Use Plan is reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One benefits current landowner and the surrounding community, and two, it's consistent with the zoning in the surrounding area. I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then motion to approve Z one three dash two three?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Should've done that to start with, but you said you wanted to see how. He asked me in the, he asked me in the hallway during the. Yeah, I know. He asked me, he asked me in the hallway, do y'all do this every meeting? I should've said yes. So, um. Yeah. Thanks Shane. Uh, is there anything else we could, um, we could do? Yeah, let's do it. SNI, that's, uh, item H.
Rob Downing has waited patiently as well.
Where's Rob? Raise your hand. Rob, thank you, pal. Sorry, man. Someone's gotta be last, right?
This is a legislative decision. Also, it deals with watershed, uh, top, the topic du jour. But if you look at the property here, Mr. Downing and his company owns a lot in the Mooresville Motorsports Center outlined in green. We're not changing the zoning, but we're considering the allocation of additional ten seventy, our SNI process. In the Cottle Creek Watershed where this site's located, we have as a county about thousand and thirty acres to allocate, and we've removed about a hundred and sixty-five of that, nearly twelve hundred. So, again, we have a thousand and thirty left. So, this request is a watershed overlay, uh, change to the site. Mr. Downing owns the building at five oh two. Had a few issues, one of which the septic failed, and there's nowhere on site that will perk. So, they're needing to be offsite on five oh four, which is a subject property for this allocation. And there's a series of, uh, site plan sheets here. This area would be purchased from lot twenty, added to lot nineteen. It would have its septic area here. They do also have plans for a small expansion of this site, but it also would serve future needs at that location. Lot twenty ironically was part, did have an allocation of about seven eighths of an acre from nineteen ninety-nine. Property lines were reconfigured, kind of got a little bit of a jumbled mess. And now, previously, if you remember, last year, it was a first come, first served request to the board. Now there's a process involved. So, it wasn't really an issue now, and we're cleaning that up for this approval. There's the reference here of oh six ninety-nine approved for three and a eighth acres. And they're asking for four point two one. And again, technically, it's four because part of it was removed before. And then there's the numbers, were over twelve percent but under seventy. So, lot nineteen would be at sixty-six percent, adding this two point one nine acres to the site, leaving lot twenty. The, the owner for lot twenty also has expansion desires. They don't have a specific plan in mind, but that would allow them to come in and already go ahead and use it because it's been allocated at this time. The request meets all these criteria in the land use plan for recommendations. Notices go out, nobody called, and planning board recommended approval with two items for this statement.
All right, I'll open the floor for public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this SNI request, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Um, Craig, would you make a motion for us for the statement of reasonable consistency?
Sure. I'll put this in the formal motion. The SNI oh three twenty-three is consistent with the western area land use plan and is reasonable, appropriate based on the following. Number one, it benefits the current owner and allows them to maintain their business with the current septic failure. Number two, it is in the best interest of the entire development.
All right, I'll, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then do we have a motion to approve SNI oh three dash two three?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Downing, thank you. Sorry, we went so long. Yeah, best wishes.
Motion to adjourn.
They're, they're not back. Is there, uh, Shane or Ed or anyone? Is there any more we want to try to do?
Right to, uh, take care of item, uh, four D, legislative hearing for condemnation, consideration of Duke Drive. Excuse me. Um, so in terms of legislative hearings, uh, this is not a typical request. Do you want me to continue or it'll, it'll?
How long you think?
This depends on if anyone's here from the, let, let's just go ahead and go. Um.
Attaboy.
So, in terms of legislative hearings, this is a little bit different. Um, staff is bringing you this, this, uh, suggested condemnation of a structure. Um, and the commission is asked to determine what the appropriate course of action is, simply because the administrative process has been exhausted. Staff can't process this any further. So, the preferred method of dealing with, um, structures that get complaints or are derelict is to run through the minimum housing ordinance and petition process. Um, the purpose of the ordinance is to promote accountability and responsibility for housing quality and to ensure minimum standards of fitness for all housing types. The ordinance was adopted in ninety-four, uh, to address dwellings that are unfit for human habitation. And the real reason that we like to process these through the minimum housing process is because at least five residents of the county have to sign the petition. It's not just based on staff seeing a site. So, there's got, there's some validity to it. So, we do have some folks that are kind of invested in their community, and they think something needs to happen. The process, um, is laid out statutorily, but we conduct a preliminary inspection. Uh, we have an administrative hearing. If one is warranted, if, if we go out to the site and it looks like that there's a problem, we do have an administrative hearing. Uh, county attorney generally attends these. The property owners sent notice, um, and folks of the community also are given the option to attend and be heard. And so, we make a decision at that time, is, is the, uh, structure deteriorated or dilapidated? Deteriorated means that it's, it's less, it's no more than fifty percent of the value. Um, if it's dilapidated, then we tend to turn towards, um, the condemnation process, which runs through the statutes in the building code. Um, in this case, we've got a failure to comply. We've sent orders, um, that we'll look at, and the, the, the decision rests with the commission. In this particular case, the property's located at two sixty-five Duke Drive. It's just west of Old Concord Road and south of Peeler Road. Um, the owner is deceased. The son of the owner is the person that, uh, claims an interest in their property but has, um, not gone through the, um, the process to, to obtain title, um, probate. So, the other interesting thing about this is the taxes on the property haven't been paid since twenty eleven. Um, quite a, quite a few other things. But anyway, the, the process started May sixteenth. We got a petition submitted. Our folks conducted an inspection. On May twenty-second, we did a follow-up inspection and then filed the condemnation notice on July twenty-eighth. We held an administrative hearing and gave them sixty days to take corrective action, and they failed to take corrective action. This is the house at two sixty-five Duke Drive. Uh, you can see that it experienced a fire at some point in the past. View of the rear of the property and to, uh, the side of one of the adjoining owners. And there is a mobile home that's also on the property. And so, you can see there's quite a bit of trash and other things that we would like to get rid of as part of this condemnation. What we're going to ask you to do, uh, is conduct a hearing. Um, and from a procedural standpoint, notification was delivered to the owner's relative that's making claim to the property, also published in the paper, um, and posted on the site. At this time, I would suggest that the board open the hearing. Um, if there's any comments, can we accept them? But then we'll close the hearing, and then I'll help guide you through the, the items two and three that should.
All right, we'll open the hearing on this condemnation hearing. Uh, anyone like to speak? All right. We'll close the hearing and, uh, need to make the findings.
Yes, okay. So, um, the condemnation factors, what I'd like or suggest that the board do is, um, vote on each of these items. Uh, number one, you've seen the pictures. You would probably agree that the structure is in a dilapidated or substandard state of disrepair that constitutes a fire or a safety hazard. It's also dangerous to the community and is a public nuisance. I'd suggest you vote on that. And then the second one would be the owner or the relative making claim to the property has failed or refused to take such other steps as may be necessary to abate the nuisance and remove the hazards that exist.
All right, we're gonna make some findings here. I'll make this, uh, first finding in a motion. Uh, the structure's in such a dilapidated or substantial state of disrepair as to, one, can constitute a fire safety hazard. Two, it's dangerous to life, health, or other property. Three, is a public nuisance. Um, we have second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second, may I make the motion, the owner or owner's relative making claim to the property has failed or refused to take such steps, such other steps as may be necessary to abate the nuisance and remove the hazards found to exist. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then, uh, make the final motion.
Here's your suggested motion. Um, so, um, now that you've made those two findings, the suggested motion, um, is there before you. That includes a couple of other things, um, about releasing an RFP, taxing the costs, um, for the abatement as a lien against the property, and kind of gives staff some leeway. That includes the county attorney, the manager's office, purchasing, host of folks, um, to get somebody on board to, to do this for. So, the, the motion is rather lengthy, but it, it's incorporates a lot of what's contained in the ordinance language, where intent and that kind of thing. So, um, I would just suggest you read that into the record, and that, that should cover you.
I'll make.
Do we, the county, do they own the lot after we tear this house down?
Uh, no, we, we would probably then go through a foreclosure process to clear the title. We're, we're gonna have, Jake could probably answer.
We, we would, we would place a lien against the property, and we would collect it like taxes. Taxes aren't paid now, so we would probably end up foreclosing on it, hopefully.
All right, I'll make the motion. It is conclusively, uh, presumed that the continued presence of the structure located at two sixty-five Duke Drive, which is Rowan County Tax Parcel four one one A dash zero one four zero two, is in such condition, is is found to exist, constitutes a clear and present danger amounting to a situation of emergency involving the public health, safety, and general welfare, which requires, requires entry upon private property for the summary abatement and removal of such danger in the public interest. Therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners direct staff to demolish and remove the structure located at two sixty-five Duke Drive, which also includes, one, releasing, uh, RFP or RFQ to acquire demolition and abatement services. Two, taxing and filing all costs associated with abatement against the property by way of a lien is authorized by North Carolina General Statute one oh five dash three five five and one five three A dash one four zero. And lastly, preparing and processing all related documents necessary to facilitate condemnation of this structure. Is that, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're back. Counsel?
Chairman. Do we need to table this item? Or is it abatement?
Um, I don't think so. I think they're here.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Wasn't sure which counsel you were talking to there for a minute. No wor, no worries, just didn't want to interrupt. Um, we would briefly like to be heard, um, on a, a couple of points of rebuttal. And so, if I may, I'm gonna at first ask, um, Mr. Jacobs to come back up to the scene.
Welcome back.
Mr. Jacobs, you heard, uh, some of the testimony in regards to concern around traffic, correct?
Yes.
Could you please, I believe you mentioned this in your testimony, but, but I did not recall, or my notes did not reflect that you fully expanded on this. Would you please, um, put into the record the, um, information related to traffic, um, that was gathered and considered in selection of the site and the design, and your opinion that it is not, um, an impact to, uh, substantial negative impact to adjoining properties for public safety?
Uh, as Shane spoke earlier, the, uh, the DOT has collected traffic data along Old Beatty Ford. That's forty-seven hundred annual average daily trips a day. Um, our site will be five hundred, uh, trips a day, bidirectional. So, if you take that, uh.
Will you, will you? Can you explain bidirectional?
Yeah, so, um, when it gets to, because we, our, our sites, um, on both sides, I guess, go, one's, traffic's going across eighty-five and then back down south towards Concord. So, five hundred trips were considered going left and right out of, uh, Kettner Farm Road, if you will. So, um, the, um, Old Beatty Ford Road is operating currently, um, by DOT standards as a level of service C. That is a, it's a functioning road. Um, the, the level of service, just real quick, is A, B, C, D, E, F, right? The E and F is a failing road. Um, Shane also, uh, announced that, you know, um, it would take fourteen thousand trips, um, to, uh, that's the capacity of Old Beatty Ford. Um, you would actually, that would be to a, a failing, uh, status. Uh, level of service D, however, is eighty-two hundred average daily trips. Um, even with the laydown yard, uh, and you could total them up, just say all thousand cars are going in one direction, um, that would only bring it to fifty-seven hundred, um, trips a day along Old Beatty Ford. So, you'd still be thirty-five hundred trips a day, um, before you even degraded to a level of service D. With our, with our traffic from the laydown yard, you would still be at the same classification of level of service along Old Beatty Ford, which is a level of service C, as defined by the DOT.
And my understanding is Kettner Farm Road is also a state maintained road, right?
Yes.
And what is, what is its rating?
Uh, currently, there is, the DOT does not have a, uh, traffic numbers on Kettner Farm Road.
Um, I, I think I heard someone say that there was a rating on it on Kettner Farm Road.
I heard testimony of, of sixty-two trips a day.
I'm at, I'm at, no, who, 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 can't do that. Um, sorry. Um, yeah, my question specifically is, uh, we, we heard someone say that there was a rating on Kettner Farm Road, and you've talked about Old Beatty Ford Road. Uh, is, since it's a state road, I would assume there's also a rating on Kettner Farm Road.
I am unaware of the DOT rating, Kettner Farm Road.
Are, 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 are you saying that not every road has a rating, or you don't know what the rating is?
I don't know what the rating is, but when our traffic engineers looked for that information, it is, it is, wasn't available for Kettner Farm Road.
So, what does A through F, um, is, is, uh, is it like my grades in high school? Uh, A is good and F is bad?
So, the DOT looks at actually A through D as being a, a serviceable road, if you will. Um, it gets a failing grade, meaning it, there, uh, you need to do something like a road widening and things of this nature when it enters E. And then certainly when it's an F, that means it's in a failing condition, and there's an immediate need. So, uh, if that road improvement was slated, it would be jumped up in, in the order.
All right. Sorry, go ahead.
Absolutely. And, but, don't, don't leave. Part of the reason I wanted to, uh, put that into the record, there was reference to Shane's testimony, Mr. Stewart's testimony. That, of course, was in the legislative hearing context, not in our context, um, in terms of all of the. not in our context, in terms of all of the levels of service. Some of the numbers came in. I just wanted to make sure the board had the full information and the written record. And there was also testimony, it is correct that the North Carolina Department of Transportation has issued permits for temporary driveways, correct?
That is correct.
And they did not require any road upgrades in order to issue that permit, correct?
That is correct.
And I think we've hit home on this, they did require as a condition of that, the restoration of the road if there's degradation, that is Kettner Farm Road, correct?
The maintenance and restoration of Kettner Farm Road, yes.
And there was reference to a 41-page permit. I have the first seven pages that I will put into the record. I did not print all 41. The majority of those are related to the bond, but it is correct that Dominion has posted a bond with respect to that permit, correct?
That is correct.
With that, I will stop with Mr. Jacobs. I would ask Mr. Hartwick to come forward, who you have not heard with, excuse me, heard from. I am going to grab his resume quickly. And while I'm doing that, would you please state your name, business address, and then go ahead?
Sure. Eric Lee Hartwick, 2016, Ayersley Town Boulevard, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28273, and I work for SNME.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwick. Would you please provide your post-high school education?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in engineering technology with a major in civil engineering from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte.
And would you please describe your role with respect to this lay-down yard?
Sure, yes. I'm managing the SNME team, which works with HDR, and we are responsible for the environmental permitting and due diligence for the permitting for this lay-down yard.
And Mr. Hartwick, are you familiar with the affidavit of Mr. Kunkel that was put into the record?
Yes, I am.
And do you oversee Mr. Kunkel and his work for SNME?
Yes, I do.
Are you familiar with the stormwater and soil erosion and control plans that are designed for this lay-down yard?
Yes, I am.
Pardon me, one second. Because I think it will help us, this is the one-page overlay that we were looking at before. Can you briefly describe the erosion and control measures that are in place on this site?
Sure. So, just to clarify, the erosion sediment control plan for this site has not been submitted to NCDEQ yet, and this does not depict all of the measures that are currently designed for that site. The three main items here that you can see are the three of the same. It's the temporary sediment basins. The temporary sediment basins for this project, taking consideration what a lot of folks have been talking about today, which is land use change, you know, taking that grass condition, you know, we're proposing to temporarily put gravel down. So, that's going to change the way the water flows over the surface, and it's not going to go into the soil and absorb as quickly. So, the basins are, you know, oversized for that condition. We can be very conservative in our calculations, and we know that the entire sites won't be covered with gravel, but in our calculations, we represented it that way so that we could be conservative in our calculations. So, as they're currently designed, these sediment basins act as if all of this area is completely gravel, which on some of it, a vast majority of it is, but there are components that we could have excluded out, but we choose not to. The, you know, the sediment basins, as Mr. Jacobs had described earlier, are going to receive all of the water from inside of the lay-down yard area. We have different diversion berms constructed, and those are going to help direct that flow to these basins and keep it from going offside. There's already issues in this area due to stormwater. We recognize that from what, you know, what residents have shared, and we could see that just based off of topography and our calculations, that there could be, there could be a concern for that. So, again, we've overdesigned these to account for that. You know, after, you know, the sediment basins are going to attenuate flow, you know, they're going to hold it back to allow that sediment to dissipate, and then discharge to the outfall, which is then going to go further into what's called a plunge pool. Again, it's just like another mechanism to help dissipate that energy before it discharges off into existing drainage patterns on the site.
Thank you. If I may, is the intent of the stormwater basins that we see here and that are designed here to hold the water, and I believe you said to attenuate the release, so reduce the flow, slowly release it so as not to overburden and impact adjoining properties?
That's correct, but that's for consideration of what's inside of the limits of disturbance that we're analyzing. We're not, you know, we're not going to have a net increase in discharge from the site specifically. That doesn't mean that there isn't already some drainage issues in this area.
You mentioned that the stormwater, sorry, the erosion and control plans were not submitted to DEQ yet. It is correct that they are fully designed and you're ready to submit them into DEQ, in part waiting to see if there needed to be any tweaks or changes from the hearing this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct. We wanted to make sure that we, you know, included anything that might come from this.
And you have been in conversation with DEQ for some period of time in the preparation of those plans, correct?
We have reached out to them as it relates to the built-upon area, as Shane had spoke about. In our preliminary discussions with the county, there was some concern about how those would be received, you know, it is a temporary use, but it is two years. Would that be considered permanent? And if it was, there would have been some design constraints that would have altered our design slightly. We did make considerations for that possibility, again, oversizing these to contain that additional water, but, I apologize, I got off course there. But the.
The plans are designed.
The plans are designed, yes.
You've mentioned the stormwater basins, but you also mentioned there were other erosion and control measures. We've talked about silt fence. Can you speak to some of the remaining items that we have not talked about?
Yeah, so, there is some stormwater diversion for runoff that's on, that is outside of the project area. We divert that from coming onto the area so that we're not adding, you know, mixing that stormwater with, you know, potentially sediment-laden water from our site that we're going to be treating. In order to keep that discharge, you know, minimized, we use a, you know, we will be developing that berm with erosion control blankets to help stabilize quickly the vegetation. The vegetation's going to add a level retardant to help slow that water down. On top of that, we have a series, very conservative spacing of Excelsior bottles, which are those straw tubular things you see in the ditches. We have several of those. Those act as a velocity check, again, trying to slow down that water so it doesn't gain that erosive, you know, velocity that can, you know, pick up and erode the ditches.
And lastly, Mr. Hartwick, there's been, have you heard testimony from the citizens that spoke in opposition to the project with respect to the tree clearing that has occurred on the property?
Yes.
To your knowledge, is that tree clearing at the request of Dominion Energy or HDR or SNME?
It is not. In fact, you know, some of the choice of the site was that it was already cleared. SNME works also on the, related to the pipeline, but the pre-construction notification for National Y-12 requires for us to minimize and mitigate as much impact as we can. So, we, for sake of threatened endangered species, we try to reduce our impacts to trees.
So, I'm going to try to unpack that a little bit, because I know it made sense to you.
Sorry.
The site as designed, was designed on already cleared land, correct?
That is correct.
The design that is on the screen wouldn't have, had the trees not been timbered by the landowner, the design would not have gone in and required timbering of the trees, correct?
That's correct.
So, it was intentionally developed, designed to be developed on already cleared land?
That is correct.
Correct. Thank you. Just want to make sure that's clear to this board, because there'd been a lot of conversation about the timbering. Is it, is it correct that the stormwater plans and erosion control measures take into account the current state of the 18 acres, regardless of the timbering that has occurred around it, such that the design and the plans don't have to change to result in what you've testified and what Mr. Kunkel testifies, that the runoff from the site will not increase?
That's correct. So, we analyze the site for its current condition, and since our limits of disturbance is already on the grassed area, we're only looking at the conversion of that grassed area to gravel for the temporary state.
Thank you. And then, you mentioned the threatened dangers and species in environmental studies. Do you oversee the environmental studies for this, did you oversee the environmental studies for this lay-down yard?
I oversee a professional wetland scientist who does a regulated surface water assessment and a threatened endangered species habitat assessment as in conjunction with other permits for this project.
Did you also do a cultural resources, or did SNME also do a cultural resources assessment of this site?
Yes, yes. We did a series of what's called shovel testing, which is transects at a frequency of 80 meters. I apologize, I'm getting that wrong, but, and it's a requirement of North Carolina SHPO to do this phase one to determine if there was the potential for archaeological factor, artifacts.
And you talk about a phase one cultural resources assessment. Is there also not a phase one environmental site assessment?
There was a phase one environmental assessment done for just the, within the limits of the disturbance that were proposed. We did not do the entire parcel, but the area that was proposed for the LOD, we did, we did do a phase one assessment.
And it is based on those assessments that the opinions have been provided this evening that there will not be any impact to wetlands, streams, or environmentally sensitive features, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Hartwick, is there anything else based on the testimony that you've heard this evening that you would like to, for the board to be aware of? Thank you. Mr. Akoc, you have been present for the testimony, correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
And can you confirm that any timbering or land clearing that has occurred on the property was not at the request of Dominion Energy?
I can confirm that was not the case.
Thank you. You have heard the concerns that have been expressed with respect to pedestrian and specifically schoolchildren's safety, and I think that we covered in our testimony the traffic control measures and the safety measures that will be put out there. But again, I would ask you, in your experience with Dominion, excuse me, with Dominion Energy North Carolina, have you been involved in the operation of lay-downs, lay-down yards in substantially similar positions as this one?
I have, as I kind of alluded to earlier this afternoon, you know, we had the one in Buncombe County that was immediately adjacent to the intermediate school there in Inca, and we, it was a very similar setup. I will admit the difference was, it wasn't residential, it was neighboring, but there was a school very much nearby. And in addition to our workers, we obviously needed to make sure we protected the kids and the families that were bringing in the buses and those kind of things here. So, we have had experience. We actually worked with SNME on that project as well, and it turned out to be a great success. It was much longer than this one, I think it was about three years that we had that one.
And you mentioned it was not residential, but in fact, it was directly across the street from Inca Village in Buncombe County, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, residential homes were not behind it, residential homes were directly across the street from it. The school was in fact behind it, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I will let Mr. Akoc sit down, and very, very briefly, recognizing our time, thank you for your attention, for your questions, and thanks for all of the folks that came out and hung in with us tonight. We recognize that this is not an easy decision. The task before you is quasi-judicial, and there is an evidentiary burden that we've talked about. And I would remind the board that North Carolina statutes provide for certain evidence that cannot be lay testimony and must come from fact and expert witnesses, and that is 160D 1402. And I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to hand it up to you. And there is a language that is highlighted with respect to what is competent evidence, and it specifically talks about, excuse me, that the opinion testimony of lay witnesses to the use of property in particular ways that affect the value of other property is not competent evidence. So, again, the use of one property in a particular way that affects the value of other property cannot be from lay witness testimony by statute. The second is the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development poses danger to the public safety. So, again, by statute, lay witness testimony cannot be considered competent evidence, and that is the standard by which this board has to make its findings on. I'm going to hand these up. Someone said there's been a lot of opinions tonight. There's a lot of emotion tonight, and we're going to acknowledge that. Generalized fears and speculation are not reasons by which this board legally can deny a use permit. We would object and argue that the generalized fears related to the degradation of the pipes, the wide-ranging fears of contaminants at the site, there is no evidence that those contaminants are present, and those would be generalized and speculative fears that we would put forward to the board tonight are not appropriate for you to consider as evidence in determining public health, safety, and welfare. I'm going to hand up two cases, again, for your consideration at the appropriate time that speak to generalized speculative fears and what the court has said about considering that evidence and making a ruling. My last thing to hand up, I will say, are proposed findings of fact. We talked with Mr. Dees, and I looked for Shane to hand him these, but I did not find him, but I will hand them up. I understand that Mr. Stewart has also provided to the board potential proposed findings of fact, which we would be comfortable with. The evidence before you this evening by Dominion Energy is clear, competent, and substantial, that the project as proposed, as designed, if constructed, as designed and proposed, excuse me, will not endanger public health, safety, or welfare, and will not be, have a substantial injury, excuse me, a substantial, will not have a substantial injury or negative impact to the adjoining properties. That's the evidence before that we've submitted into the record, and we would ask that you approve this temporary use permit with the proposed conditions that are before you in the PowerPoint presentation here, and of which I will make sure your clerk has a copy.
Can you define substantial injury for me?
Yes, sir. So, substantial injury would be that that would have a long-lasting negative impact. For example, you talked about substantial injury for a property value and heard evidence that there would not be substantial injury to property value. This is a temporary use. By its very nature, there's not a substantial injury to property value, was the testimony. Substantial injury to adjoining property would be cutting off all access such that the use was, you couldn't use it, not potential inconveniences of uses that might also be on this property, such as the construction of 18 or 20 residential homes. Substantial injury would be something like cutting off all access. That would not be allowed. Legally, you would not be able to do that, even if it was only for a temporary period of time. That, Mr. Chairman, would be substantial. The types of impacts that have been discussed tonight, and Dominion is not standing here saying that there won't be any impact, right? This is a use. This is going to have traffic. There are going to be measures to mitigate those impacts. It does not pose a danger, by the evidence presented, to public health, safety, or welfare, and it doesn't have a, pose a substantial negative impact to adjoining properties. And that's the evidence that we would, we would before you this evening.
Correct.
Thank you. We, of course, are open for further questions and/or discussion on conditions as need.
Jay, if some things I'm not supposed to do, throw a shoe at me or something. But can I ask Tyler a question? Are you the one that mentioned, someone mentioned the rating of your road. Was it you?
Believe that was Ms. Hannah Weathorne.
Who?
Believe mentioned the classification of the road.
How do you know that?
I just looked it up on NC DOT.
And you did do that?
Yeah. And I provided screenshots of the ratings, the value and the domain. So the, one of them is seven, and they're like the lowest.
We have so many papers here, I won't be able to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're at our, thank you so much. I think we're at our end here. First of all, we appreciate these companies coming in and providing natural gas. I think that's a good thing. Does anyone know what the cost of this project is offhand for the whole, not, not for the lay down, but the, but the cost for the entire project? The pipe, pipeline project?
We've been approved for about $113 million.
Would you do that if you thought natural gas was going away?
Absolutely not.
That's nice to know. So good, yeah. Just a little sidebar there. We, we've got a whole lot. We're kind of handed this process that frankly, we think is horrible. I won't say the word I wanted to use. Where you bring in experts who give us their opinion, but we can't use their opinion. Our real estate guy seems like a really nice guy. We've never had a real estate person come in and tell us that this would, would harm property values. In fact, we've asked several of them, have you ever done a project where you returned a report that said it would harm property values? And the answer has been, well, no. So perhaps you're a unicorn, but we've, we've not seen that in the past. So we are torn between you all determined, change their lives, and them in this small road that we, well, tell me to shut up when I need to, Jay. So here's where we are. I hope you all know the position we're in at this point. They come in and they present facts. And you all didn't come in with facts. So now, the choice, we have two choices, three choices. We can approve it, we can deny it. And I'm thinking about Tyler. Tyler said, we don't want to continue this. You need to vote it down. I hope you understand, we are not in a position right now to vote this down tonight. I'm going to make a motion that we table this. That gives us time to go through this and to, and to come up with what our questions are because I think there's a lot of questions here. And that's the best that I think, and grab, he's grabbing his microphone to bail me out.
Well.
Probably. But, but we, we have a tremendous amount of material to go through. And I don't know that this board is ready to vote on this tonight. We're just in a, we're in a tough spot at, after 11 o'clock of having to accept, to accept all this without having studied it. So Jay, why don't you give us what our options are here?
Well, your options are to approve it, or deny it, or table it. But right now, procedurally, where we are is we're still in the public hearing. We haven't closed the public hearing. Uh, no, 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 not yet.
There was a roach. I, I got him, by the way.
And, you know, I, because I bring this up, because if, if you think that you're going to want additional information, you can recess the hearing. You can close it now, and we can renotice a, a new one, but that's not the preferred method. If you want, if you think that you're going to want additional information, you can recess the hearing to a date certain and have everybody come back if you think you're going to have additional questions and you want people to be able to address those. Or you can close the public hearing now and table the discussion and decision making to a date certain, at which time you will not receive any new information. And I would give you sort of this, this, this advice, that you're not to speak with anyone about it, you're not to speak to each other about it, you're not to speak to anyone about the merits of this. You each may go study, you each may do things. And if you have questions, you can bring those to the next meeting and, and pose those to me then. But there isn't to be any communication outside of this room. So that means anybody in the room shouldn't, if you choose to recess, the admonition would be to everyone to please just refrain from reaching out and calling or sending emails. Otherwise, we'll disclose those when we come back. And we'll, we'll deal with them then. But that would be, you can keep this hearing open, or you can close it. And either way, you shouldn't communicate with people outside of this meeting.
All right. Everyone understand that? Quasi judicial, different animal. Okay? Everyone on both sides understand that. So I would rather leave the hearing open because the purpose of this is so we can ask additional questions to the applicant and to these folks. So.
I'm assuming the goal is everyone understands to get to an appropriate answer, whether you agree with it or not. And I.
I have a question, Jay.
Yeah, I was going to open it up for, for any questions, but I think we just need to stop.
Kind of procedural question.
Yeah.
So, obviously, you know, they're experts, and so we would ask them questions. I don't know, I don't really, I actually don't know these folks. But if they had an attorney, would we talk to their attorney, or would we just talk to them individually?
Meaning at the next meeting?
Yes.
It would be however they wanted to do it.
Oh, I got you.
And, and, and understand that because you hold this public hearing open to the next meeting, it doesn't mean that you can't start the meeting and close it and not take anything new.
So, so we shouldn't talk to their attorney? And then if they had an attorney, we shouldn't talk to?
About what?
About any of this?
At the, at the next meeting?
Before the next meeting.
No, we're not going to talk to anybody until the next meeting. Yeah. So no one should reach out to you between now and the next meeting. It all has to be presented in the public hearing if you choose to keep it open. Yeah. So we shouldn't speak to anyone between now and the next meeting.
All right.
And, and when we open the next meeting, I will go through that and ask if anyone spoke to anyone related.
Our motion would be to leave the public hearing open and to, our next meeting would be a 3:00 meeting, which we wouldn't want to do because a lot of folks work and travel, you know, if you guys are traveling. And so we would want to have another 6:00 PM meeting, which would mean that would be in a month, whatever that date is. Second meeting in February. So. So Jay, our motion would be to, would it be to recess the public hearing until the 19th? All right, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Dees, if it is appropriate, might the board express the type of additional information upon which they feel they need to make a decision?
Well, we haven't had time to process all this paperwork you've handed us tonight.
Understood.
You know, I want to be able to see what's going on before I make this type of vote because this is going to affect a lot of people.
What I think.
Yes, sir.
What, what I think, so that we're efficient at the next meeting.
Yes.
Is I think what I will do separately with the board is if any board member has specific requests, they can direct those to me. And, and then, and, and then I'll respond to them. And if it's something that I think either party, and I'm just going to designate you as sort of the representative for that group. So I'll get your contact information tonight. And that way, because, just like a courtroom, and, and this is, just like a courtroom, I'm not going to communicate with counsel without also communicating with you. And I'm not going to communicate with you without communicating with them. So if there are any questions, and I think information would come in, I would share that with both of you, regardless of who is to bring in additional information. And we'll just have to handle that one at a time with them.
Yes.
I also can't have a, a board meeting with all of these guys on an email, talking about this case or asking questions. Now I've got a whole nother issue with, with government. But, but anyway, so I'll, I'll talk to them. We'll do it individually. They can direct stuff to me, and I'll get your contact information. And, and we'll just share it with both of you.
And that accomplishes my goal of trying to be efficient, understanding y'all are going to look at the information provided to date. But if sitting here today, there were known questions that might be helpful for both groups to hear. But I appreciate Mr. Dees, you being the intermediary of this.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a second?
I have a second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, the county ordinance is if you, if you're here past 11, you have to stay for the remainder of the meeting. So, I'm kidding. If y'all want to, y'all want to go, you're welcome to. We've got other, but when, when we're done, we've got it. What's that? Yeah, we've. We've got a long closed session on top of this. Thank you all for your kindness. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all being here.
Y'all have a forum whether I'm here or not.
Y'all have a forum if I'm not here, too.
Hell, I think we ought to hit the door.
Hell, yeah. We got a long ride home.
I'm making.
All right, we're going to get going again. Aaron, is Aaron Poplin still here? This is petitioning to rezone the parcel owned by Rowan Clearing Partners.
I was hiding in the back room there.
All right, here we go, Aaron.
All right, let's see if we can pull this up.
We stay much longer, I just stay up.
All right.
I had to be awake for all of it.
I'm ready when you guys are.
Yep, go.
All right. So this is request Z 1223 from CBI CD to RR. You may recall this property. There was a rezoning on it back in 2020 to go from RR to CBI CD for our land clearing company. Since that rezoning, the whole COVID thing happened. They didn't actually go through with it. Now they're looking to sell the property to go back to the original zoning designation.
Do we need to talk anymore about that?
Yep. Go through it, planning board. They had a hearing. Nobody showed up. They adopted this statement of reasonlessness and consistency and approved it unanimously.
You have those?
Yep, right here.
This is it? Okay. All right. I'll make this a motion, Z 12-23.
You got a public hearing?
Yep.
Open, close. There we go.
Open, close, all right. All right, Z 12-23, consistent with the West Rowan land use plan, appropriate based on the following zoning change, residential is consistent with the surrounding land use. Second for that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Z 12-23.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aaron, thanks. You glad you stuck around?
Be good. Taking tomorrow off.
No.
You should.
We're getting, we're getting ready to be there. Ready to be there.
Not now.
Take the bull by the horns. This is item 4E on your agenda, I do believe. This is for legislative hearing for nuisance abatement. I mentioned this previously. This is kind of new stuff for staff as well as the commission in terms of what this legislative hearing is for. It's for a nuisance abatement, but it's also for the commission to consider adopting an ordinance. Mentioned this previously as well. The, the reason that we're here is that we run our administrative process. All our powers of enforcement and encouragement and coercion and all that stuff have been exhausted. So we're here tonight, late, to talk to you guys about what, what we've done as staff. The owners are here as well, and they can impress upon you what they, what they've done since, since some of this has occurred. And also, I failed to do this last time, but this is Ryan Mickey. He's our ordinance enforcement officer. Lot of this stuff falls to Ryan to sift through valid complaints and tho- Lot of this stuff falls to Ryan to sift through valid complaints and those that are, you know, just people complaining. So, when these come to you guys, I think, I would hope that you realize that there is stuff to make it stick, and that's why we're here. So, we talked about this before, the minimum housing ordinance and the petition process. The reason that we put value in this, again, is because the petition is signed by five residents. People are taking time out to tell us there is, there is an issue. We do a preliminary inspection to see if it's warranted. If it looks like the conditions are necessary, we have an administrative hearing, then we, then we make a decision. In this particular case, our finding was that the home has deteriorated. That means it's 50% or less of its tax value. And then we go through a process for order to take corrective action, follow-up hearing, follow-up inspections, and if those don't happen, that's why we're here. There's a failure to comply. This home is located on Stonewood Drive. Interestingly enough, it falls right between Granite Quarry and Faith ETJ. You remember, last year, we took back a portion of the ETJ that Granite Quarry released, and we picked up this house during the time that we were in negotiations or in conference with the owner. A petition was submitted by the residents of this little subdivision on March 23rd. Ryan conducted an inspection on the 29th. We held an administrative hearing on the 21st. We provided the owners 90 days to take corrective action. They did attend the hearing. We conducted a follow-up inspection on August 3rd. No significant progress had occurred, and we had another hearing. And again, we're here because they failed to take corrective action. Here's a picture of the outside of the house, it's located at 1540 Stonewood Drive. And we're talking about nuisance abatement, not condemnation. Condemnation would require the home to be demolished. You can see this house, it's a good-looking house. On the exterior, here's pictures of the back, there is some debris in the yard, but it's not overrun. But when we look on the inside of the house, we've got some issues with unsanitary conditions, trash, and the like. And so, we've got some damage as well. We've itemized six standards from the minimum housing ordinance that are violations per se. They're unsafe or unsanitary, dangerous and detrimental to the health and safety of the community. You can see by this picture, there's other structural members that have problems. The floors or roofs shall have adequate supporting members and strength to be reasonably safe. Again, based on this picture, it doesn't appear so. The next one, talking about promote sanitation and cleanliness. Every floor, interior wall and ceiling shall be safe, capable of supporting loads. And the last is garbage, rubbish, and materials to be recycled shall be stored in a manner that will resist coverage to rodents. And so, based on some of these pictures, we can see that's not particularly the case here. So, little bit different again, so what we, as part of the minimum housing process, we're asking the commission to adopt an ordinance to abate this nuisance, excuse me. So, it's just a very brief ordinance, but I'm gonna cover it very quickly. Rowan County does have an ordinance, an authority, as part of its code of ordinances. The purpose is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the community, and also enforce minimum standards of fitness for all buildings used for human habitation. The intent of this ordinance is that the dwelling located at 1540 Stonewood Drive is unfit for human habitation due to deterioration and other conditions rendering it unsafe and unsanitary. It's dangerous and detrimental to the health and welfare of the residents of the surrounding community. Enforcement procedures, went through this earlier. We received a petition, the owners were identified, they were served. There was an investigation, a hearing, follow-up investigation, another hearing, and then another finding and order to take corrective action on August 29th. Covered this previously, the standards we feel that are in violation of the ordinance. We also advised them that appeals of the administrative order could be petitioned to the Housing Appeals Board. Congratulations, guess who the Housing Appeals Board is? You guys, you're exactly right. They did not opt to exercise that option. The commission is conducting a legislative hearing tonight. And then, if need be, and the commission finds that it's warranted, we would request that you adopt this ordinance. Similar to the last process, we're at item, Roman numeral one, we're asking you to conduct the hearing. Also, notification was hand-delivered and mailed to the owners on January 5th. Property posted on the 3rd, an advertisement run January 4th, and Salisbury Post. So, procedurally, all items have come to this point, the board is equipped to make this decision. As I mentioned, the owners are here, they have some pictures that they would like to share as well. Once the hearing is closed, we'll talk about making the findings and then adopting an ordinance, if that's the condition or the direction you want to go. Any questions? Good. I'm gonna ask April if she could help. Yes, sir. What is the remedy? What are we asking? We're, we're asking that, that... Are people living here? They are not, no. What we're asking is, from an abatement standpoint, to hire a contractor. Again, it's through the RFP, RFQ process, whatever, to get a contractor to go in, clean it up, and then board up the structure, so that no one can go in it. It sort of maintains the stability of it. I think you would tend to agree, just by the exterior pictures, that the home is of a caliber that it could be rehabilitated. And so, that's really the hope, is that we're removing the trash, stabilizing it, and the owners or somebody may have the means to take action and remedy the violations.
Get how hard we have to take it, we have to make it structurally sound?
We're not gonna do that, no, sir. We're just, I think we've got a pretty wide berth, and one of them could be that we fix up the house. But, I don't, I don't think, based on our caseload and experience, I don't think we want to be responsible for hiring a contractor to go in and fix up the house.
But what's the end game on it?
Well, I think from a nuisance standpoint, the trash, from the rodents that may or may not be present, just, it's sort of a soft approach at trying to clean up a mess as best we can without taking someone's home from them. As I said, this is not a typical process, this is not a real fun thing to do either in the realm of local government planning, so... All right, so we'll have a public hearing, and I suppose we've got, some folks like to speak? Hi, welcome.
I'm part over with my sister. One thing about our house...
Gina, are you Gina? Gina Basinger?
One thing about our house that's not told is our house was broken into. We had 90% of the work done on our house to be ready to move back in. However, over the weekend, the last weekend in April of 2022, we were not down at our house, we would go down, we would check, we would clean what we could get done. We had a lot of stuff already done, bagged up, just waiting on a dumpster to be delivered to our yard or in our driveway to unload all the stuff. Our house was broken into, it was ransacked. All the bags, all the trash you see laying on the floor was already bagged up. Part of it was down in our garage to go out to trash cans. But then we got the dumpsters coming, and the house was broken into. All those bags were gone through. They stole my brother-in-law's ashes in his urn off of our mantle. They stole a lot of stuff out of my sister's room, her lockbox, which contained her wedding band and several other things. They, I mean, they just... Our house didn't look like that before that. I mean, there was not enough room in trash bags and stuff, and in our cans, we were doing it as we could go. But our house was not like that until it was broken into. And if you look in the one picture where the couch is, there was a window unit in that window. They pushed the window unit in, that's how they got in the first time. We were down there, we did some cleanup, we went back. Fourth of July is in faith every year, we were at that, we did not go down to the house except for to pick up the mail. We didn't go in, and during the week of the 4th, they busted out the back window on the door, went back in, and ransacked some more. They dumped every cabinet, every drawer, every closet, everything was thrown everywhere. It's me and my sister by ourselves. And, you know, we tried to do it, we've been trying to do it on our own. It was too hot to do it back in the summer. We didn't want to put the window unit back in to keep it on, because we were afraid somebody else would come back in. But we have been working, it's cooler now, we've been, we've made a lot of headway as much as we can. She is, has a back problem, I am 100% disabled. And we're doing it as we can go, and we're down there. They'll tell you, well, I see them down there here and there. Well, a lot of times we're down there, times they don't realize we're down there, they work. We don't, we're down there during the day while my niece is at school. She goes to Faith Academy, we're right there, we go work on the house till time to pick her up from school. Do different things. We do have a lot of stuff that is ready to go out. Now, that one table there, sitting there, that is all our craft stuff, and we're buying a tote to put all our craft stuff in. They even went as far as used our pots and pans and stuff that were in cabinets, and they cooked food and stuff on our stove. I'm throwing all that out, and we're trying to do it. It's taken us a while, because it is just me and her. We spend a lot of time down there Sunday and got a lot of stuff accomplished while... And we also have our mother, who is in a nursing facility in Mooresville, who was in the hospital last weekend, so that took us away from working on it then. But we are trying our best and working the hardest as we can to get this done. I have had, I went on Angie's List to try and find a company to come clean out. We had one guy tell me he would come and do it for $295. He never showed up. Thank God I had not pushed the send button on that money. He never showed up that day when we were supposed to meet him to give us the keys. In fact, I called Ryan Mickey and told you we were meeting him at the house, and he never showed up to give him the keys. Then we went with another place on Angie's List, and he wanted 500, and that was to do everything. And he would, he was a contractor also, that he could have fixed the ceiling. The ceiling that you see coming in is in the corner of my niece's upstairs bedroom. We put a window unit in there, because I heard when the hurricanes come through in 2018, we had a power surge when the power come back on. It blew the breaker on our heat and air unit. So, that's why we went about the window units until we could get the other fixed. We haven't gotten it fixed yet, we're kind of waiting on that one till the last thing.
Can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, so, do you live there or not live there?
We own it, we have not lived in it since 2019, when the water, the pipes burst. The people we bought our house from did all the work on the house. He did the floors, he did replumbing. We bought the house signed on March 23rd of 2019, 2017.
You bought it in 17?
We bought it in 17. By July the 14th of 2017, we had to call plumbers out there, because the water, one of the lines busted under the house.
So, is your plan to move into it and live in it at some point in the future?
We were living in it. We were living in it and moved out when the water, when we figured out we had to have the whole place replumbed. It was not sanitary, you know, we didn't have water to take baths or nothing, and so, my sister and I moved out. And we have been staying at the Affordable Suites on Joining Road.
Did vagrants move in, and is that what happened?
They were just there the one weekend, and then they came back another time. But since then, my brother helped us to, all the doors.
Where'd all the trash come from? You said it came out of bags, but where'd it come before it was in bags?
We had stuff in our garage, bagged up, because when our waters, we have a water system, it's a three-tank water system. We had a leak under our house. Come to find out, it was the return for our water system. So, when we had the plumber come out to fix it, instead of putting the pipe back in the return, he stuck it in our septic tank, so we had to bypass our water system.
So, it sounds like you probably need our help, don't you, to get this over with, so you can get back into the house and live?
I would love to have some help. I mean, we've talked to our pastor, and, you know, her and her family have offered to help us, but they had some, we've had a death at our church, and then they had something this past weekend.
Looks like, looks like you went through a lot, you're going through a lot.
We have, I just finished, I just finished up treatment for cancer, so...
Yeah, we can help you with this and...
I would love that.
And take care of that for you, and then, obviously, I don't know how it's gonna work, but you'll have to, you'll have to pay us back at some point. Ed, what happens, is this a lien then? A lien could live forever, right?
A lien can work forever, and they can make payment options with the tax office to pay the lien off. But we've been, we've been doing this since March of 2023.
All right, why don't, I like Mike's idea, why don't we agree with you to go ahead and let these guys get a contractor in there to get it cleaned out? Whatever windows need to be boarded up, I mean, that'll...
We don't, the windows don't need to, the only thing we've got is to change out our back door and our front door, but we found the doors we want, we just haven't purchased them yet. But, I mean...
All right, can we, can we then have Ed work with you and your family and... Sorry to interrupt. Yeah.
Trying, but we're in over our, I'm gonna be honest, we're in over our heads. We honestly are, we have tried to do this by ourselves, and we are in over our heads. I reached out to different, I mean, like I said, I went on Angie's List, and I got like 20 different people.
You've been trying, and we appreciate that, and we're gonna help you, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let's, let's quote...
Us. We were raised in the community of faith. My mom and my dad were civitans, J.C.'s. We've always been one on the giving side, we've never been on the taking side, and it's just very humbling, I'm gonna tell you.
Yeah.
I mean, today has been a long day for us. My, our honorary aunt, her funeral was next door this afternoon, and we've been over here, so it's been an emotional roller coaster for us through our family for a couple of weeks, so...
The county's gonna, the county's gonna help you, and then you can return it by helping somebody else in the future, so that's the way it works. All right, Ed.
Everybody, I guess it is time for us to swallow our pride and let somebody help us?
I'll help you. Ed, what do we need to do at this point?
I'm just, I would like, what we would like done, there are clothes and stuff scattered all through the house, we do not want to lose any of that, we really want to go through all that, because it was bagged up to go, some of it was bagged up to go to Nazareth, to the restor. But we want to be able to go through all our clothes and stuff and get this stuff out that still is there. And we are looking through everything right now to make sure that when they took the urn off of our hearth, they didn't just pull the bag of ashes and throw it somewhere. So, we've been kind of particular in that area, and that's one of the areas we've been focused on, trying to make sure, and nobody in our housing development seemed to have seen it, but there was a 12-foot canoe in our backyard that got out of there, but nobody's seen it.
Bring Ed up, and let's let Ed instruct us on where we go from here, and so, thank you, okay? So, we're back to this point. We've conducted a hearing, I don't know if you closed the hearing yet, or maybe hit that roach. So, we're asking you to make a finding that the structure's deteriorated. If you do, then we'll adopt the ordinance. If you do, then we'll adopt the ordinance. So the abatement factors are, and I think, based on the photographic evidence, you would agree, that there are apparent violations for the standards of fitness related to unsanitary condition, structural soundness of walls and floors, plumbing, garbage, rubbish, and materials recycled or stored, not appropriately. There has been a failure to comply with the order, whether it's willful or not, or vacate or close the home. And so the finding would be that the dwelling is deteriorated, and you can probably lump all these together and make that finding, and then we'll talk about what the motion is after that. All right, I'll submit this as a motion. I need to read them?
Just read them.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye. Stick something in there about a 50% raise, one to get you guys...
I'll give you a raise when I get one.
Wait a minute, hold on, let me type that in. So, the suggested motion, and before we get into that, I want to just ask something to be really clear. Are we talking about just cleaning out the debris and the material? And Commissioner Pierce asked a really good question about like, what are we doing? The boarding of the structure prevents further break-ins, nuisance, and those kind of things that may occur. Are we going that route, or are we going to clean it out and then try to help them to the next step of getting contractor in place and those kind of things? Because we're in sort of a, at the edge of our capabilities at some point. I would say, I'd say clean it out and secure it. Okay, all right, and that's kind of where, that's kind of what, yeah. And that way, they can, we will still continue to work with them as we can to help this. So, here's the suggested motion, I'm not going to read it, so one of you guys, Commissioner Green just got back, so he might be fresh. But this is the suggested motion, and it says that you would adopt that accompanying ordinance that I read earlier as part of this, and the similar standards are, again, the RFP, filing it as a lien, and then it incorporates all of us as staff into one unit to make this happen. Does the county attorney have any? Okay, thank you, sorry to be so long-winded, but... All right, all right. Can we just adopt what's on the screen, and we need to read it? Thank you. All right, as presented, as a motion, we have some, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and sorry I had to stay so late.
I was looking forward to reading that, Ed.
Yeah.
Excuse me? All right, let's go into closed session.
All right, we've got closed session, as soon as we clear the room, we'll enter closed We're coming out of closed session, motion to come out of closed session? All right, we, yeah, we have no action coming out of closed session, so we have a motion to adjourn, a second. All in favor, say aye. All right.